Although it's only 6:59, the official clock says 7 o'clock and so we shall begin. Welcome to the city council meeting. And first we'll have a report from the city attorney on action taken during closed session because council member Starbuck and I were recused from considerations with regard to the Lompoke Theater.
Thank you, Mayor. On items one, two, and three, there was no reportable action and item four was continued to the next meeting.
Really, we're not going to take two years to do Joe's evaluation, honestly. We'll get there. Okay. And our invocation this evening from Pastor Hunt, could you all please rise?
Let us pray. Almighty God, we come to you today recognizing you as the source of all wisdom, knowledge, and love. Tonight I ask you to end you our mayor, council members, and staff with divine wisdom, strength, insight, fortitude, and conviction as they conduct the business of this great city. The task at hand is not easy, but I pray that you will give blessing to their diligent labor and that decisions made in these chambers would accomplish the greatest good for our city both now and long into the future. Thank you for these men and women here tonight, both at the dais and in the audience, who are here fulfilling a call to civic duty and action. I pray for your peace, your help, your protection, your encouragement, and your blessing on all throughout this evening. May your peace, favor, and blessing rest upon our community. I pray this in your most powerful name. Amen.
And if you join me in the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first presentation this evening will be from the Turducken Dinner Group and I will let them proceed only under the condition that Chief White can't leave after. Hear that, Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, and fellow city council members. I am the chair this year of the Turducken Dinner Group and it only took us nine years to appoint a woman, so we're progressing. I'm Regina Lingel. And if Bob would join me, he's another member of the Turducken Dinner Group. I'd also like to bring up, well, I'd like to add that Jim and Lori Beck from Sacramento are also a part of our dinner group. They're not here with us tonight, they are in Sacramento, but they always make sure that we have programs, tickets, whatever we need for our events. So they're a very integral part of our group. I want to bring up Lenial and Carol White, Dwayne and Bonnie Humdall. Stan and Lisa Hart are also members of our group, but evidently they could not be here this evening. Jim and Ann Jimenez, Jim is homesick and was not able to be with us tonight, but Ann is here. Ed and Ramona Caseras, John and Helen Free, Steve and Kathy Pepe. We had a few new members that we added on this year as well as these last four people up here coming up now. We also inducted a couple from around the area. They have a home here, but they also have a home in other parts of California as well as do a lot of traveling, and that is Dennis and April Barker. So we have a group of 20 now on our committee that helps to raise funds and keep the libraries open and giving them some new needed material whenever we can. And this last year, we had a wine auction. We did the pizza party at the Kloppeppi's Estate in June and in November, we did a wine auction and it was 75 bottles of wine and it was for $75 a ticket. And our illustrious Chamber of Commerce CEO, Ken Ostini, won that, so if you want a party, you'll have to go to his house. Oh, yes, thanks to Steve. Steve drew his own ticket about two, two times?
You drew my ticket.
Oh, yeah. That's right. Molly and I drew his ticket about twice and then he turned it back in and wanted someone else to get it. I'd like to call up the librarian Molly Gerald and our members of the foundation, or the Library Foundation and Friends of the Library. We have from the sale of tickets from the auction, the wine auction, we have $5,000 that we were able to get and make a contribution to both of these organizations that are there to help our libraries and get the needed extra materials that they need. So at this time, I'd like to present the Friends of the Library, a check for $2,500, and the Library Foundation, a check also for $2,500. And Molly, did you want to say something?
Yes. Thank you, Regina. And the representatives from the two groups just have a quick word to say as well, so I'll let them go first.
I just want to thank the Turduckens for this and the prior support. It's wonderful. And this money, along with all monies that come to the Friends of the Library, will be used to fill staff requests for items, services, and programs that they cannot get out of their regular budget. And so it all depends on what they want and we try to provide it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melinda Agiri and I would like to thank you on behalf of the Library Foundation. The Turducken donation will go towards book endowments for each library. The foundation makes a distribution from the endowments annually to enhance the collection for all ages of our libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda.
Okay, I'd just like to say that in 2003, when I attended the first Turducken Dinner, I had no idea that nine years later, this amazing group of people would still enthusiastically be looking for ideas to raise money for the library. They've raised about $140,000 and had a very good time together working to make this happen. When venues have been available or another barrier has gotten in their way, the Turduckens have not been deterred. They've found a way to make it happen. Not only have they made it possible to add special computers for children, much-needed equipment for staff and patrons, and many books and other materials. They've opened up their homes, served as library trustees, volunteered to decorate Christmas trees for the Friends raffle at Christmas, and one couple, as Regina said, who moved to Northern California, still travels to Lompoke to help with events. So thank you to the Turduckens who embody the true spirit of giving and do it with great flair.
And I just want to let everyone know that in June, we are going to do another pizza party at the Kloppeppi Estate and so be looking for information coming on that and tickets that will be on sale. Thank you. Bye.
And now we'll have a presentation from the Santa Barbara County Housing Authority regarding the renewable energy solar panel installation at housing authority properties all over Lompoke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight just to say thank you for the cooperation of city staff in a, what has turned out to be a monumental process. And we just have a very brief PowerPoint presentation, if I can figure out how to work these buttons. Just to give you, just to put this in context, countywide, the housing authority of the County of Santa Barbara is involved in trying to retrofit solar on most of our properties. It's actually 863 units. It's an $11.5 million project. We've been in this process now for a couple of years. We actually, because of the, the county of Santa Barbara is in three utility jurisdictions, the city of Lompoke, of course, PG&E, and Southern California Edison. So we, we're lucky enough to work with three utility companies, so we do have a basis of comparison of how things work. This first slide you see is three of our projects, Lompoke Gardens 1 and 2, as well as the Miller Plaza. So in Lompoke, we have six multifamily affordable housing properties. It's a total of 223 units, 56 structures. And our goal when we started out was to produce enough energy to meet all of our tenants' needs as well as, as meet the office power consumption needs. And that's also the case, that was our goal throughout the county. So for you folks who have an interest in system sizes, this is a 376 KW size system. It'll produce 550,000 kilowatt hours a year. In this case, we've installed more than 1,600 panels at, within the city of Lompoke. All of those were SolarWorld panels and I will tell you that the, the panels are made in the U.S. As a matter of fact, they're actually assembled in Camarillo. And we've used a variety of inverters to convert it from DC to AC. Just to give you a sense of the cost of the system, it's just under $2.3 million for this area. We used a combination of funds to pay for it. The housing authority competed nationwide with 3,300, 3,300 other housing authorities and we were one of, I think, 84 housing authorities to receive an award of stimulus funds and that helped provide some of the funds for this project. We used a variety of other sources of funds and the city of Lompoke also has a utility rebate program and so that $300,000 will be paid over a five-year period. In addition, we cobbled together some other funds through an energy performance contract. So this, this just gives you a sense of, of the scope of the project. The installer did a very nice job. We chose not only American-made panels, but we chose black panels so they, they, after a while, they just kind of blend in and they're, they look attractive, so. Just a few more shots from some of our properties. This, this actually, this property here is a 48-unit senior complex, parkside garden apartments, and it's actually just behind the, the Aquatic Center. Just another aerial shot of the same. So really, the purpose of us coming tonight is to, is to say thank you. I can tell you as a basis of comparison, when you're working with PG&E and Southern California Edison, the departments are actually literally across the state. They're not located in one, in one place. And when we first introduced this idea of, of a project of this scale, just to give you a sense of the magnitude, if you put all of the panels together from all of our locations, it would cover more than three acres of territory. So when you're putting solar on 56 building structures within the city of Lompoke, it takes a lot of skill and coordination, not only from the installer, but a lot of cooperation from various city staff. As I mentioned before, we, we started last in the city of Lompoke and we finished first. So it's a testament to the cooperation that we received. Mary Kammer, as an example, called a meeting with many of the key folks who were involved in, in, who were stakeholders from the city side. And we, we basically were in a room and discussed the technical aspects of this job and, and resolved a lot of the problems. But, but, but it's, a project of this size has a lot of complexity to it, so it required a lot of interaction as we, we go along. Just one final comment, our, our maintenance manager for the area actually sent me an email and I want to read part of it. I would definitely mention, because I asked for some feedback from staff, who actually was helping us with the, with the, the project and what they were doing. So Jim Harms writes me and says, "I would definitely mention the ground crews or the guys actually doing the connections, changing the meters, walking into backyards, and working with all of our customers. The city, the Lompoke City electric crews are fantastic. They certainly went well beyond the call. They did, they checked their work, they rechecked it, they were on time, they were very courteous to not only his staff, but also to our residents, which certainly was important to us. I can't say enough about these guys." So, and that's how we feel about the, the whole team. So we, we really appreciate the cooperation and, and we look forward to possible installations in the future. So, thank you.
Are there any questions? I have one, just because I've always wondered, if a solar panel doesn't face south, how big a difference does it make? Because I noticed you have some, some, most are facing south, but there are some other orientations.
Yeah, so there's calculations that are done. The angle of the panel, the direction that it faces, all impact exactly how much a panel will produce. And so I'm not certain exactly how much of a difference it makes, but I'm actually told that south is obviously the, the most important and then there's a difference between even an east-west, east-facing panel versus a west, and I'm not certain why that is, so.
I think the answer might be standing next to you.
Okay.
Mayor, there is not a lot of difference in the south and the west. The south is ideal, west next, east next, and north is the worst, so. But there isn't a lot of difference and like Bob said, it depends a lot on your tilt of the, of the arrays and you want it as close to your latitude as you can get it. And so he's, they, they've done a good job of orientating everything.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Done? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
They do look really good. Okay, before I go down with the State of the City address, I have some good news On Friday, we discovered that the County Board of Supervisors was going to hear the issue of taking the deed in lieu of trust for the Bridge House located in the county area and the, the staff had made a recommendation to not take the deed in lieu from LH CDC and that created a whole bunch of phone calls whereupon I and council member Lingel went to the Board of Supervisors today and I want to read to you what I said to them on our behalf and then I have the good news. And I said, "I'm the mayor of Lompoke, but because this item came up on short notice, I have not had an opportunity to speak with council. Today I speak based on our prior council discussions and decisions. I was surprised to learn that the county staff has not recommended accepting the deed in lieu for the Bridge House from LH CDC. I understand clearly the financial liability the council will, the county will be accepting. However, as the staff report points out, the county has a role in addressing homeless issues throughout the county, including the Lompoke area. I would go further and say that the county is responsible for creating, coordinating, and funding homeless services. The city of Lompoke has helped and will help with homeless through the Mark's House. I am here to ask the board to support option B today, which was the acceptance of the deed. If you cannot support that option today, a two-week delay in this decision would allow various solutions to be explored. It's unfortunate the staff recommendations came out on Friday afternoon of a three-day weekend. This timing allowed no time for those of us most affected to work on alternate solutions. At the end of the day, it is our responsibility as local and county elected officials to address the needs of the homeless in a caring way. Please direct the staff to work on all the affected agents, work with all the affected agencies to craft a viable solution. Approve and allocate, and also please approve and allocate funds to the Mark House, because that was part of the consideration." So what the board did after receiving ours and many other people's testimony was they voted 4-0 to accept the deed in lieu from LH CDC and Good Samaritan already had a meeting scheduled with the county administrator tomorrow, so now these things can move forward. So it's another positive step in the LH CDC dissolution. Lots of good news. Okay, my, everybody said, "Well, you know, how's the city doing? You know, we talk about all these different things, so how about a State of the City?" So here we go. And I promised all my council members it wouldn't be long, so I checked it with a stopwatch at about 18 or 19 minutes. Tonight I will discuss what this council, working with the city staff, has accomplished in the last year. And it's all good news. Seven days after being sworn in, this council held the first of a series of workshops to look at a list of positive improvements for the city of Lompoke. Economic development immediately became the number-one council objective to bring jobs to Lompoke residents and revenue to the city. These revenues would in turn improve police and fire services. The council established the first single-purpose committee to review our process for handling permits for planning, building, and engineering. The committee created excellent recommendations that were approved by the council and implemented by the staff. The position of Economic Development Director and Assistant City Administrator was established and Teresa Gallivan was hired from the Riverside County Economic Development Agency in late summer. Teresa's professional ability showed results within weeks. Prior to Teresa's arrival, city administrator and I worked diligently on every business that was interested in Lompoke. On the next subject, graffiti and the patchwork paint-outs, which make you feel like you live in the middle of a crime wave, was addressed. The council approved an innovative program that paints complete walls with one of seven compatible colors. This eliminates the patchwork and makes future paint overs easy. Begun in early summer, this program has covered the scourge of the graffiti bandits. By March, the council was immersed in creating a balanced budget with the help of staff and pay concessions from our city workers. These concessions are the city worker's commitment to a sustainable budget for the residents of Lompoke. This council is committing, committed to restoring these pay cuts as general fund revenues return. In the budget process, the council reckoned, reorganized departments and eliminated two of the city's seven department director positions. In the Public Works Department, a combination of funding sources, including a very competitive grant, was assembled to provide a citywide street slurry seal project and the installation of a substantial number of new bike lanes at little or no cost to the city. During the year, this council also oversaw three large pot projects begun by the prior council. The final phase of the $90 million regional wastewater treatment plant was completed. The dehumidifier at the Lompoke Aquatic Center was completed to stop corrosion and increase pool use. At the same time, the recreation staff continued to refine aquatic center operations and scheduling to substantially reduce the general fund subsidy. Today, the community center is nearing completion. Through 2011, the staff and the council consistently monitored the projects through its various issues to manage the cost and assure that a great facility was completed. Throughout 2011, we had impacts from outside our control, required numerous meetings and creative responses. The first was the 10-month fight against the governor to keep our local tax money for our redevelopment agency. Although we were ultimately unsuccessful, rest assured, we worked long hours on this issue. Next came the battle over redistricting with both the county supervisors and the state redistricting commission, which planned to cut us into no less than six districts. Ultimately, this council's efforts were successful in keeping Lompoke in a single supervisory, senate, and assembly district, largely through our personal efforts and testimony and a nice drive that council member Costa took to Sacramento, or to Fresno. Finally, the council and staff spent countless hours on the issues of the Lompoke Housing and Community Development Corporation. Because of the council's planning, the Human Services Commission's work, and the staff's implementation, the Mark's House shelter was closed for only a week while the Bridge House has just been accepted by the county to reopen. On a lighter note, on January 2nd, 2012, after a long wait for the state to eliminate asphyxiating gophers as a felony, our park staff began to retake our parks and provide safe turf for our athletic programs. In four days, the park staff took Riverbend Park soccer fields back from the gophers for a 70-team weekend event. No one was hurt. Life was good. Also this January, the Lompoke Police Department learned that they would receive three officers under a fully funded federal grant. I've now shared with you just a few of the hundred-plus accomplishments of this council and our staff. It is important to understand these accomplishments as they are the foundation that the council builds on in 2012. So where are we going in 2012? First, on November 11th of 2011, the council reaffirmed that economic development and jobs in Lompoke are our top goal for 2012. To that end, our Economic Development Committee has been formed and is already working on an economic development strategy. The long-range strategy developed by the committee will identify impediments to businesses coming to Lompoke, to the Lompoke Valley, and businesses we should target for recruitment. Throughout 2012, our strategy will to be, will be to work diligently with those businesses that express an interest in Lompoke and implement the plan created by the Economic Development Commission. To remove some longstanding impediments, this council has already begun a complete review of our general plan and zoning ordinance to eliminate roadblocks to future businesses while assuring the public health and safety. The reality of today's economy is that businesses will locate in cities where their use is permitted and they can avoid the three-to-18-month conditional use process. We look forward to the public's input as we work on this issue, or these issues. There are four large economic development projects underway in Lompoke today. First is the construction, construction by SpaceX of 124,000 square foot building on South Vandenberg, which is moving along. SpaceX plans to ultimately launch one mission a month from the old pad that they've converted. Not only does their workforce live in Lompoke, but thousands of their customers, as well as tourists, will come to watch launches, which will provide economic vitality. The first big one should be a great party. Second, we have to thank Police Chief Dabney and our retired fire chief, Lenial White, for leading the effort to bring the state-of-the-art Allen Hancock Police and Fire Training Facility to Lompoke. The decision of the prior council to give the Hancock College 38 additional acres of city land will provide jobs and visitors to the Lompoke Valley for decades to come. This facility, along with its high-speed pursuit driving track, will provide retraining and certification to police and fire personnel from across California. The driving track is the culmination of a dream, dream begun in the 1980s to save the lives of police officers and deputies in California. Today, half the officers killed on duty die in vehicle accidents. The third project that began to take shape in 2011 is the conversion of the old hospital to a new $17 million treatment facility for police, firefighters, and military personnel. The facility, which will be operated by our hospital district, will provide local construction jobs as well as any, many, tough tongue, jobs as well as many long-term jobs. Additionally, because this facility is not a critical care facility, the hospital district has chosen to use the city of Lompoke rather than the state for its planning and building inspection. This project was approved by our planning commission last week. Another one. In 2001, Fesc Parker became the first of many vendors to look at the former Greffco site. Each time a vendor looked, they walked away and largely because of the old policies and procedures of the city of Lompoke. In November 2010, Steve Zodovich was the most recent one to walk away. This council's changes in city policies and the new attitude that resulted encouraged Mr. Zodovich to buy the property in September of 2011 and begin upgrades. The city administrator, economic development director, and I worked weekly to move the project forward and I'm happy to announce that two wineries are currently moving in and others are looking. This project was a test of the new policies and procedures in helping businesses get open quickly. The lessons learned are already helping other prospective projects in Lompoke, so you learn and you go forward. Finally, with the assistance of the Economic Development Director, Marshals will be coming to the former Big Lots this summer and the Walmart expansion plans are moving through the Building Division for construction this summer also. There are many other exciting economic development opportunities we're still working on diligently, but I can't tell you about them yet, sorry. It's important for you to know that businesses are coming to Lompoke to look because this coun- council and this city staff have created a reputation as a business-friendly city. Let me repeat that. This council and this city staff have created a reputation as a business-friendly city, and people are coming to us. I can't stress that enough. Our success is accelerating because the council and the staff have created this environment, and we can go forward. On another note, nonprofit organizations also have a huge impact on our valley, providing a wide range of benefits. A year-long effort by the Rotary to donate a downtown clock was facilitated by our utilities director, who made a mock clock. My wife wrote that. With the mock-up, Ron took pictures around downtown, created the staff report, obtained council approval, carried out the project, and it's a great improvement to downtown. Thank you, Ron. Thank you to the Rotary. The Fallen Heroes Committee funded and placed a flagpole at Beatty Park to remember our military fallen heroes. They are now working on a larger memorial on the park hilltop overlooking the valley, and we look forward to their concept coming to the council for review. Nicholas Schmidt, with Community Help, acquired a grant from Pepsi. I found out that everybody in town bought Pepsi, and that's how we got it done. And they watched on the internet, and as they as we weren't in first place, they all went out and bought more Pepsi. I understand you can wash your car with it. He and a group of helpers installed a nine-hole disc golf course at Beatty Park, and he's now working with even more volunteers to add nine more holes. David Baker has spent a year planning a BMX bike dirt track for the youth of Lompoc. Last week, this proposal was approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission. The Lompoc Motorsports Committee, which is working to bring a one-eighth mile drag strip and dirt motocross track for motorcycles, is moving forward. They've received a sanctioning letter from the International Hot Rod Association and presented their draft business plan to the city administrator and staff last week. The nonprofit working to bring the California Space Enterprise to the city, land next to Hancock Hancock College, has submitted their first document package to the city. This museum, education, launch viewing, and space enterprise center was first proposed by the California Space Authority. It could potentially provide up to 2,500 jobs in the Lompoc Valley. It would also provide, in conjunction with Allen Hancock College, space-based education for fifth grade through the four years of college on the site. Another committee has just formed with the United States Tennis Association to improve our courts and start a youth tennis program. The youth tennis program is inexpensive to join, and the USTA provides training for coaches and loaned equipment to start the program. Many of these projects, as well as providing recreation, many of these projects, as well as providing recreation for Lompoc residents, are economic engines. As an example, the soccer tournament I spoke about earlier that we facilitated the fields for in January brought about 750 players and their families to Lompoc for a soccer weekend from all over the central coast. All of the services provided by all of the nonprofits are simply irreplaceable. These groups truly represent who we are as a community. There are many other ideas that the staff has been working on at council direction yet to come. Tonight, three of the possibilities will be discussed. A local contractor incentive, lower-priced untreated well water for parks and schools, and a nuisance abatement code effort that asks for public cooperation. Here are just a few of the ideas being worked on by the council and the staff. An update to the city website, and these are all from our earlier workshops. Creation of incentive programs to attract new businesses. Review and pass an updated sign ordinance. Develop a first-time home buyer whom okay, that's it. I'm having a drink. Yeah, it's just tough. Develop a first-time home buyer down payment assistance program. Create and implement a strategy to reduce gang activity. Find grants to stop the erosion of our parkland along the San Dionés River. Revise the FEMA flood map to match the current 100-year flood zone. This will lift restrictions on both River Park, Riverbend Park, as well as eliminating the need for flood insurance for some of our residents. Implement a comprehensive shop and Lompoc program with the Chamber of Commerce and our Economic Development Committee. A strategy to make more use of the zoning administrator in the planning process to speed up projects. The implementation of an online utility payment system currently being integrated into our city software. A marketing campaign to fill the new community center with activities that will allow the center to pay for itself. A review by the Utility Commission of all utility rates and operating expenses. A new single-purpose committee to review the structural issues and potential uses of the old pool building. Tablet computers for council members to cut and report duplication costs they'll pay for themselves in one year. A plan by the Beautification Commission to replace high-maintenance street trees and trees that are damaging sidewalks and curbs. A review by the Beautification Commission of city landscaping to reduce maintenance costs. Research by the Utility Commission to expand solar installations in Lompoc. Seems like we're doing well, though. Location and design of a new transit center for which we have received a $1.5 million In November, the council prioritized our goals for 2012. Number one, economic development and jobs. Number two, public safety, adequate police and fire services. Number three, nuisance code enforcement and graffiti abatement. Number four, efficiencies to save costs and speed up results. Number five, accountability for the council and staff. And number six, miscellaneous for all that's left. The council, staff, and everyone in Lompoc should be very, very proud of all we have accomplished together. We have made these improvements in our city during the worst economy in 70 years. We have also constantly had to deal with issues beyond our control and developed creative solutions. The city administrator commented the other day that she could not remember a past year at the city when so many major issues that had to be resolved came to us. We have all faced the 2011 test under fire and conquered every issue. In 2012, building on our work in 2011, Lompoc will be a better place to live, work, and open a business. The news is already good. Our property tax revenue rose slightly, and we just received the third-quarter sales tax from last year showing an adjusted 14.9% gain in sales tax in Lompoc. I don't know what unknown issues will wait for us in 2012. Today, it was go see the county supervisors, but I'm certain that this council and staff, as we did in 2011, we will conquer every new issue and continue our improvement improvement plans for the city of Lompoc. And I guess I would finish by saying it's all good news. No, you can't applaud.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you. I'd be remiss, and I want to thank you for your comments from the council, but the thanking Chief Dabney and Chief White for the public safety complex. We have a former council member, Dwayne Humdall, in the audience right now, and Dwayne was also extremely instrumental in that, so I want to thank Dwayne as well.
And the other members of the council.
Of course, yes.
Because they made it all happen. So now, chief and chief and Ron, would you stand up, please? Come on. Two chiefs and a Ron. Now we can applaud. And next, we'll have our city administrator, executive director's staff report. Are you still the executive director or not anymore? We can take that off, can't we? This is the first time, yeah. No more RDA. Yeah, chief, you can go home now. Or you can stay. Free coffee.
Honorable Mayor, city council members, audience, and viewers. The city administrator's status report tonight includes two monthly project updates related to the Dick Dewey's Community and Senior Center and the installation of the traffic signal and curb ramps at the intersection of Ocean Avenue and R Street. Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer Kevin McKeon is available tonight to present on these project updates, and he is at the podium, so I'll hand it over to Mr. McKeon.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. As mentioned, I am Kevin McKeon, Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer, filling in for Mike Luther tonight, who's on a well-deserved vacation. Couple things, obviously, the the update is in your in your packet. This is the 17th project status report for the community center. Our city representative onsite is Harris Associates, and they've provided a report for January for the activities through January. Couple items to highlight in the report. The contract as it sits right now, including all change orders, is about $4.15 million, and we have expended to date 3.2 million, so we've paid made progress payments of 3.2 million, which is about 77% of the amount owed the contractor. As far as work onsite, the report says the paving hasn't been done yet, but actually the paving is done now since this is almost two weeks old. So all the onsite paving outside the building is done, as well as the curb and gutter and those type of flat work. I think landscaping still needs to be done also. Inside the building, they're working on plumbing and electrical. That is ongoing. In the areas that those utilities or those conduits are complete, they're working on drywall and painting. There's still significant work to be done in the kitchen. I know there's a lot of focus on the kitchen right now with materials going in and and other installations. The other items of note, as of the end of January, the contract, the working days for the contract were up, so January 31st was the last allowed working day prior to any penalties that would be assessed. The contractor has asked for another 79 days to complete the project, and we are reviewing that request, and it initially looks excessive. So the way this will work is if if we don't grant a change order to give them more time, they will be liquidated damages assessed against the contractor until the point of time is the contract is accepted as complete. I think I'll stop there and answer any questions that you have.
Kevin, there's furniture incoming. Is there going to be a place to put it, or are we going to have to make an arrangement to put it somewhere else?
I missed the beginning. What was the?
I'm sorry. There's furniture incoming.
Yes.
Will there be a place to put it there? Are we going to have to make arrangements to put it elsewhere because of the delay in the construction?
You know, I don't know the timing of when recreation's furniture is coming. I'm not sure if there's someone here that could answer that question.
Mid-March, if I remember correctly.
There will certainly be an empty space in the building to place things. I'm sure we could work around it, but I don't know what, not an expert on the interior furnishings, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd think it'd be important to make an agreement with the contractor so he doesn't charge us to store our furniture in our building because he still has it.
Right.
Okay. Dirk says put it in the bottom of the old pool. Okay, are there any other questions with regard to this project? Okay, go ahead on.
And the other project is the R Street Signal. That project is in design. We've made several submittals to Caltrans. Once they issue their approval, we'll then ask for authorization to proceed with the federal funding for construction, and we'll advertise the project for construction. So it's it's still 30 to 60 days out at least in terms of advertising the project.
Okay. Are there any questions on this? Okay, thank you. Are there any staff requests and announcements?
No staff announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And now we'll have oral communications. This is your opportunity to come up and talk to us about anything you want for five minutes. If it relates to an item that's further down the agenda and you can wait, we'd appreciate having it then, but if you can't wait, come on down. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Kim Austin with the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce. Been a very busy month at the chamber. First week of February, I attended a Central Coast Tourism Council conference in Solvang. Our chamber's been a member of this organization for many years but never been actively involved, so it was a very eye-opening experience for me. Today, late in the afternoon, I received an email from the Visitors Bureau Director in Solvang about a group from France that's interested in coming and looking at Lompoc as a potential site for tourists. So on the 23rd of March, I'll be meeting with them. Don't know a lot of details yet. Again, the first contact was today, but that's planned for the 23rd of March. I'll give you more details as I find out more about it, so, but they want to come to Lompoc. That was the interesting part about the Central Coast Tourism Conference is that this group really goes around the world and promotes the Central Coast of California, which is the number-three destination in all of California. San Francisco and LA are number one and number two, but in between, Highway One is the number-three destination, and most of these tourists want to go from one to the other, so where do they go? Down Highway One. So they promote the Central Coast, and we're going to work a lot with them to help promote our area. On the 6th of February, I attended the Economic Alliance for Northern Santa Barbara County Meeting in Santa Maria. The president of Cal Lutheran University was there to listen and talk about the possibility of an extension up in northern Santa Barbara County, either Santa Maria, Lompoc area. There was probably 40 people at this meeting. I was only one of two from Lompoc. I made sure that I've got a pitch in for it and saying that, hey, look, if you're looking in this area, we might have some room. And I was thinking specifically of the Ken Adam Park area and what what possibilities may lay up there, so I made sure we got our two cents worth into them if they if they decided to come up here. Also, in February, I attended the Western Association for a Chamber Executive Conference in Las Vegas, met with chamber execs from the entire Pacific Northwest and Southwest area, probably about 700 people there, a lot of good sharing, networking, different sessions, very worthwhile time. And I got to, again, meet with some of my academy students I'm going through within Sacramento at this conference, so it was a good good time. I've also been actively involved in the, and I won't steal too much of Theresa's thunder, but been actively actively involved in the Lompoc Economic Development Committee. We had two very, very strong four-hour sessions in developing strategies. It was tough. It was it was really tough, a lot tougher than I thought it would be, but I think it's been very worthwhile, and I'm very pleased with the direction, and I'm looking forward to our next sessions next week on Wednesday and Thursday as we finalize that process to come forward to you folks. On the 15th, on kind of the lighter side of things, the Flower Festival Association had a mixer at the at their office on West Ocean where they introduced the queen candidates for this year, so they're excited, and and they're getting raring to go for the Flower Festival this year, so hopefully they'll have a successful show. At the same time, we had a new business announce their grand opening ribbon cutting this Friday, West Side Pizza, where you know Enterprise Rent-A-Car is at, right next to that, kind of behind Caro's in that little shopping center, but they'll have the ribbon cutting on Friday at 3:30, so please, please come down and be a part of that. Also at our chamber luncheon on the 15th at the Pizza Garden, a new member to the chamber who'd been in business well over 20 years in Lompoc and never been a member of the Chamber of Commerce until this year. It was nice to have Councilmember Starbuck speak at that function. I asked him to speak on the state of the city, which he said, I'm not doing that. He emphasized, which I thought was really good, the importance of people getting involved in the general planning process, and I thought that was a really good message to get out, and we'll continue to do that. So I appreciated him coming and and providing that input to the 40-plus people that were there at the at that function. And lastly, strategic planning. Theresa Gallivan and myself will be meeting tomorrow to start developing, I guess, goals that are more aligned with what the council's looking for. I'm not quite sure what that is yet, but her and I will start working with that, and I'm sure you've you've council members will be providing her with input as to what you're looking for, and we'll we'll get there. So that's it.
Thanks, Ken. Cecilia?
I'm Martina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question for you. A while ago, we used to have this 2020 Vision Program going on. Is that still going on in the chamber, or has that kind of died out?
Well, you know, it never, I've never been involved in it. I've heard of it. I know I submitted input to it a couple of years ago before I ever worked for the chamber and never heard anything back from that. So I've not implemented anything with that. I'm kind of kind of hoping our new economic development plan would kind of take the place of that. Now, there's probably folks here in the audience that know more about that than I do. I think Bob Manny knows a lot about that.
That's okay. I just wanted to get an idea whether it's active today, but the answer is no.
No.
So then my next question to you would be, does does the Chamber have any specific plans right now regarding the redevelopment of downtown? Is there any effort going on on that? Or is that going to just be focused on the Economic Development Committee? I want to get an idea of what's going on with downtown, if the Chamber is actively working on revitalization there right now.
The Chamber is not right now. That is part of the economic development plan, one of the strategic goals that we came up with in that part.
So that is going to the Economic Development Committee?
Right. And that is what was talked about at length in that committee, as far as revitalizing downtown Lompoc.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Lingel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ken, I just want to, again, thank you for coming and giving us your reports. I can't remember, in the past, is expert reports we've been getting from you that we ever received before. So again, I want to thank you for coming and giving those reports.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? And Councilmember Skyler, I'd like to acknowledge you as one of those people that also was on the Council and helped bring the Police and Fire Academy forward. So thank you so very much.
Main reason on that is, you know, I spent 30 years with the Sheriff's Department at search and rescue. We always had to go down to Riverside and use slick track to get our EVOC certification. And it was inquired, taking off in a week, in two or three days. And, you know, I just thought, to many people that have that, why they couldn't have one someplace else and build it? Riverside area, if you ever get a chance to go down, they've made a racetrack and everything, and it's a really nice facility. Ours will be also, so thank you. Mayor, Council, I'd kind of address you. Tell just a little story tonight. A lot of times I come, and I know different things are happening. A lot of you are on different boards, committees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, about what things happen. For every action, there's a positive and equal action. In the automotive industry, for years, we used cleaning solvents to clean parts and stuff. And Santa Barbara County has decided that cleaning solvents are not allowed anymore. I could take my business and move it the other side of the Santa Maria River, and it'd be no problem, I could use solvent all I want. But in Santa Barbara County, you can't. So the alternative is a water cleaner. But the secret to making the water cleaner work is that you've got to eat the water. So now, I used to pay quarterly $150 for my solvent. Now this Aquarius fluid runs $200 when they service it, and requires a heat, and it's at about $20 a month in my shop bill. So for every action, there's a positive action. I caution you, when you vote on some of this stuff, it sounds good on the top. Maybe look at it and see who it affects and who it costs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Carol Benham, Lompoc resident. I know the mayor gave a brief result of the Board of Supervisors' action today. I wanted to expand on that just a little bit. I was there also, and thank you, Mayor Lynn, and Councilmember Lingel for being there as well. What I really would like the community to know is that there was an extraordinary breadth of testimony today. Easily 25 people. People from Lompoc, people from the community of Santa Maria, people from the community of Santa Barbara, who were speaking not only in support of homeless, but in support of the Lompoc Valley, of not leaving Lompoc in the lurch by the county accepting the staff's recommendation to decline the deed-in-lu for Bridge House. There was really extraordinary support for the city that I was just, couldn't have been more pleased to hear. Santa Maria's mayor spoke in behalf of the Board of Supervisors declining the staff recommendation, and in fact, moving ahead with the deed-in-lu, which the Board of Supervisors did, 4 to 0 unanimous vote, as the mayor said. I also wanted the community to know, I know there's going to be an awful lot of people out in the community that are going to be very glad to hear that as part of that motion adopted today, the Board of Supervisors voted to conduct a forensic audit of LHCDC, going back to the first year they did not submit an audit, which the last year was 2006. That means the last five years should be audited. Thank you. I was delighted. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Lingel and I had to leave before everybody had testified because we had to come back for this meeting. But, you know, I think every witness or everyone that testified added something to it. The gentleman from Cossacks Esperanza pointed out to the county that they had done this exact same thing twice before when an agency went under, and so this wasn't new territory. And they talked about financial alternatives, and the folks from Good Sam talked about bringing in other funding. And so it was a great community effort on everyone's part, and a good result came in the end. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a quick point for the record. I could not go to the supervisors' meetings because of work schedule, but I did send an email to all supervisors, as a Lompoc resident, not as a council member, expressing my opposition to the staff recommendation. So I was there, but just in an email form. Thank you.
Well, I shared with the Board of Supervisors that some of us were working. So, all good things. Who's next? Going? Going? Gone. Okay. Coming back to Council for the consent calendar. On the consent calendar, we have the approval of minutes, the approval of expenditures, a payroll voucher for $1,043,000, a voucher register for $1,027,000, a voucher register for $548,000, an electronic manual register for $2,293,000, and credit refunds of $734.93. The energy efficiency rebate second reading in Ordinance 1581/12, amending Section 3.48.010 of the Lompoc Municipal Code relating to claims against the city, a second reading. Is there any item a Councilmember would like to have removed, or is there any item we'd like to have discussed? Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I just have one edit to the minutes. City Clerk, I wanted to state that I appreciate the minutes that you've been producing. I think that they are wonderful, and they provide great detail, and I'm very satisfied with the direction that we went. On page two, at the bottom, I would like my comment to be changed to "Understood to be compliant with current zoning requirements." Thank you. With that, I'll move that we approve the consent calendar. Thank you.
And a second, please.
My second.
Is there any discussion, you know, I didn't ask, does anyone else want an item pulled from the consent calendar? No? Okay. And is there any other discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. And that brings us to council appointments to the Youth Commission, and there are multiple appointments for a single position. Yeah, that there are more, there's more than one person who is applying for the adult position. And I've never seen this before, so. Come on down. I see you hiding in the back.
Mayor Lynn, can we go to appointing the three youth positions?
Let me get a clarification of how to proceed. City Administrator, you want to talk about this? Or do you want to ask the Parks or the Recreation Staff to talk about the issue with regard to three people requesting one appointment? I've never been down this road before. Now, there's only, there's only one adult position, and there are three applicants for the adult position.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite Recreation Manager Joanne Plummer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. You had a question regarding the candidates that are before you for the Youth Commission. We, I believe, have three youth openings, and there are three youth candidates that have applied for those positions. In addition, we have one position that has no age restrictions, typically looked at as an adult position. And we have three candidates before you. I believe one is a returning candidate, has served on the Youth Commission for a number of years. And one is the youth pastor at Four Square Church. And another one is affiliated with Rape Crisis in one way or another, as I was reviewing the applications.
And typically, in the past, what procedure as a council followed when there were three people applying for a single position?
To the best of my knowledge, we've never had more than one applicant at one time apply for the adult position. However, when we have had multiple youth members apply for one or two youth positions, it's at the discretion of the council to make a choice.
Thank you. Okay, are any of the persons who, or Councilmember Lingel, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was going to ask the same thing, if there's any candidates in the audience that they could...
Are any of the candidates for any of these positions with us this evening? No? Okay.
Then, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to move that we accept the three youth candidates for the three positions by acclamation.
Okay, and a second.
Oh, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the three youth. Could we, let's just push a button and make it, get it done. And that passes 5-0. And I'm sorry, that was Councilmember Lingel. And who was the second?
Councilmember Costa.
Councilmember Costa, okay. I don't see an easy solution to the last one. We can always draw a name out of the hat, I guess.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lingel?
Yeah, may I make a motion? Sure. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Christopher Brock as the adult appointment to the Youth Commission.
All right, well, I guess I'm okay with that. Chris has done a good job for a long time, so I guess I'll, I would second that. And a discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Martin?
I would like to nominate Brittany.
I would like to second that.
Okay. And technically, you can't have two motions at one time, so we might get down to this. Councilmember Starbuck, your lights next.
Well, maybe a suggestion here, because, you know, I attend the Youth Commission, and they really could probably use some adult help on there. Why don't we have two pro tem members on there? If we've got people willing to do something with the Youth Commission, why don't we take advantage of it?
Yeah, that's an outstanding suggestion. I think we would need to flip a coin for the two people that have been nominated, or draw out of a hat, or whatever.
Mayor Lynn, yeah, would we have to edit the handbook to add those positions to the commission?
The Youth Commission has nine positions. Seven are youth members that reside within the school district boundaries, and two are adult, perceived as adult members, that reside within the city limits. So anybody is welcome to come to our meetings. Our meetings are open to the public. But we do have two positions currently. We would have to revise the handbook, as far as I would understand it.
I think what Councilmember Starbuck was saying was that they would be non-voting members, that we would ask them to come and become involved. And I'm pretty sure they would be invited to join the table and be part of the fun.
I think there would still be an edit to the handbook, though, would it not? I'm fine with that, yeah.
To the city attorney?
For clarity, it'd be good if we did that, if we changed the handbook.
Before we appointed them, correct?
Not necessarily, because they're being appointed to a non-voting position, so it's, you're just asking them to come. But we can certainly change the handbook to identify them specifically.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion, and then to incorporate all of this, which would be to appoint the two members that were nominated, and at the same time, to amend the handbook to allow it to have...
So your thought is to have one more voting adult member on the Youth Commission?
Why not? If we want people that want to participate, I welcome them.
To the city attorney?
I would suggest you just make that conditional on changing the handbook. If we're actually going to add a new position, a voting position to the commission, then if you want to do it conditionally, we can do that, and we'll be back to you, the change to the criteria.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lingel?
I think if we're going to do that, I should probably withdraw my motion, and Councilmember Martin should withdraw hers. So we have a clean slate. Because we're not making, we're not making any decisions tonight. We're bringing it back, is that correct?
That's what the city attorney recommended.
Actually, what I was suggesting is that, I agree with Councilmember Lingel that if we want to go forward with, withdraw those first two nominations, and the motion would be to modify the handbook to, and the commission to add another adult position, and conditionally approve the two new adult positions to be filled, and another position to be a non-voting member, if I understood what you were saying.
Okay, let me try this. I move what he said.
Mayor Lynn, I'm going to disagree with you as well as with Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, hold on just a second. Yeah. Too complex. Okay. I unmove that, but don't forget what you said, because we might come back to it. Councilmember Starbuck, you haven't said much, so.
Yeah, is Ms. Plummer, she leave? Oh, there you are. There's currently already one adult member that's in there in tenure right now.
Yes. Commissioner Owens is not on there. His term will not expire until January 31st of next year.
Right, just be aware that there's still one that's already there.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. So it's my understanding that we will appoint one member of these three this evening for that other vacant position, what I would like my understanding to be, and then appoint the other two to non-voting positions, which is something that we can do tonight without having to amend the handbook first.
That's true. That is something you could do tonight.
I believe that that was my understanding of what Councilmember Starbuck initially stated.
And I will definitely second that one. We incorporate the three candidates.
Okay. So now we're back to flipping a coin, drawing out of a hat, to select from the first, for the voting member. Everybody good with that?
Okay, so we're going to vote on one tonight.
We'll appoint one tonight on the flip of a coin.
Well, okay, so then, if we're going to do that, I need to withdraw my nomination. Councilmember Martin needs to withdraw hers. Otherwise, we need to vote on mine. And if it passes, fine. Otherwise, we vote on Ms. Martin's.
Actually, for parliamentary clarification, a nomination actually doesn't need a motion and a second. So what we have is two people who have been nominated for one position. You now need to vote, and typically, it's done by a ballot. And then we give you the piece of paper. You write down the one you want, and we'll give it to Ms. Plummer, and she can read who everyone voted for.
Mayor Lynn, it is also my understanding that all three will be appointed this evening. One is a voting member, two is a non-voting member. Then the handbook will later, at a later date, reflect those two additional non-voting members.
Yes, but that'll be the next step, after we...
Correct.
Okay. Everybody happy with a coin toss?
No, I think we need to vote.
Okay. So off to the pieces of paper. The city attorney will be taking care of the paper and the official ballots. There will be no substitution of the official ballots. That is the official ballot.
Make sure your name is on your ballot. Because we have to announce that. We have to announce who...
But I don't want to be on the Youth Commission.
We have to have the record show who voted for whom.
Oh, my. And you're, of course, going to pick up the ballots from us. Come and get them.
So, Mr. Panoni, for clarification, I'm just reading the names as they're indicated.
And who voted for whom?
And did everybody put their name on here? Councilmember Bob Lingel voted for Christopher Brock. Councilmember Dirk Starbuck voted for Christopher Brock. Mayor John Lynn voted for Christopher Brock. Mayor John Lynn voted for Christopher Brock. Councilmember Ashley Costa voted for Brittany, I can't pronounce her last name, Makrazek. And Councilmember Martner voted for Brittany as well.
Based on the results of the vote, Christopher Brock is reappointed to the commission, and now I need a motion from the, from the council to create two non-voting members, and with the understanding that as soon as they're created in the handbook, they will be filled by Brittany, I still can't pronounce her last name, and Michael Janatus. And a second, please.
A second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that? And could we vote on that, please? Okay, that passes 5-0, and we will take a three-minute break, four-minute, five-minute break, so I can catch up and get it all written down. Next, we have council requests and announcements, the establishment of a policy for public projects to grant a bonus for contractors that hire locally. And our presenter, Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer, Kevin McKeon. You're getting a lot of microphone time this evening, Kevin.
That's right. Yeah. If my voice will hold out, I, I'll be happy tonight, so thank you. As you mentioned, I, my name is Kevin McKeon, Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer. I want to start out by reading a part of Public Contract Code, just a very short part. California law requires that general law cities toward public proj, award public projects to the mathematically lowest bidder. That's my, my synopsis of it. The actual quote is, "If a contract is awarded, it shall be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder." So, back in February, several council members expressed an interest in, hey, we've got a lot of construction going on, it should be nice if we could make the contractors hire locally, and, and give some jobs to the local citizens. And so, there was some direction given to staff to go see if we could come up with a way to make that happen. We did some research, and looked at some other cities that maybe have accomplished this already, and found two in particular, and I got some information from those two. The first one we found was the city of Santa Cruz, who, and again, this is requiring local hiring in construction work. They have a very aggressive policy, where in projects more than $100,000, they require 50% of the workers to be local. And they have a very comprehensive procedure to make that happen. The contractor turns in some special forms with their bid, and then every two weeks has to submit payroll forms showing residency in town. There are substantial penalties for not, for kind of faking it, and if, other penalties can be that you can't get another contract with the city, or for five years, I guess it is. So, that's Santa Cruz. Stockton also has a policy where they, you must hire locally, and theirs is a little, not as aggressive. They, they require what's called a good faith effort, which means that you turn in the bid, and you kind of, you kind of show your evidence on how you tried to make it, how you tried to comply. They don't have a lot of penalties, and I'm talking to the staff in Stockton, they weren't really sure that they, that it was that successful, because there wasn't any teeth in their policy. So, both, both Santa Cruz and Stockton are charter cities. So, it's clear that charter cities can require local hiring on construction projects, as, as the council would like to do. However, Lompoc is not a charter city, so how does, how does that affect us? I couldn't, we, we, staff couldn't identify any general law cities that require local hiring on public projects. We actually, I talked to, I have responses from six different cities that said that they had done the same thing that we were doing right now, where they had investigated the, the option, and there, all six of them said that their city attorneys had advised them that it was not legal for general law cities to do this, because of that quote that I read you earlier about awarding to the mathematically lowest bidder. State law does not allow general law cities to modify which contractor is the low bidder based on local preferences. So, requiring local hiring in Lompoc is not an option. However, as we thought about this some more, talked to the city attorney, and we think that you could provide a similar, kind of get, get at it from a different way, by paying a bonus to contractors that meet a local hire threshold. So, another way to say that would be, it is not a requirement to hire locally, under this policy, it would not be a requirement to hire locally. So, you could, you could win the bid and just choose not to hire locally, and you just wouldn't get the bonus. But if you were the low bidder, and you met the threshold, and, and the requirements, however they are, however we decide to define them, then you would get this, this bonus. So, in the staff report, I put together a couple of different scenarios on how that would work, just based on some hypotheticals. Took one project we recently awarded to, which is the Library HVAC retrofit project. That was awarded to J.R. Barto, who is a local contractor, so presumably, he would qualify for whatever policy we, we would come up with. That was awarded in August 16th for about, a little less than $300,000. So hypothetically, if we had a bonus that was, say, 1% to 3% of the construction value, after you took the bonus and added on any cost to administer it, you'd be looking at $4,000 to $10,000 as the, the bonus amount that would, that would have been paid on that particular project. Just to kind of put it in more of a concrete examples, $10,000 is about a half, half a block of sidewalk, or two blocks of story seal. So, that's, that's kind of a real world example of what you can do with $10,000. In terms of a fiscal year amount, if, if you decided to make this applicable to all public projects that the city would advertise for, and we looked at last year, 2010, 2011, the, the city bid about $10 million worth of projects last year. So, again, using that same 1% to 3%, we would be about $110,000 to $310,000 as the total bonus paid for those projects. And $310 is a little less than a mile of an overlay, if, if you're looking at concrete examples. Now, what gets a little tricky is, how would you pay for the bonus? For the library project, that was funded by CDBG. CDBG is a federal, federally funded program. They don't allow bonuses to be paid out of federal funds. So, for that particular project, I don't know of any other funding sources, but the general fund that would, that you would have been, that you could have used to pay for the bonus. There's lots of projects with lots of different fundings. We, we, this would apply to utility projects, so a waterline project that gets bid, obviously, there's water, there's utility funds that pay for that, and as far as I know, you could pay a bonus out of utility funds. So, some, some projects may not qualify just based on the funding that they have. Let's see, a note of the, again, of last year's projects, of the six largest projects, 50% or three of six use local contractors without any incentive or bonus by the city, at least one, at least, at least one local contractor. So, again, if I looked at the list of, of prime and subcontractors that they turn in with their bid, three of the six had at least one Lompoc contractor on their, on their bid form right now, without any type of incentive. So, that we are reaching, we are achieving some sort of local hire, assuming that those contractors hire locally, and I, that seems like a pretty reasonable assumption based on them being in Lompoc. So, California law requires general law cities to award public projects to the mathematically lowest bidder. And we already talked about how some projects are achieving some sort of local hire already without any incentive. If the city did decide to move forward with adopting a local hire preference, we had a couple of questions, and these are the first four that came up from the staff's point of view, is what size projects would receive the bonus? What size bonus maximizes the incentive without overpaying? What must the contractor do to qualify? Do the local employees need to work for the prime contractor, or would hiring a Lompoc-based subcontractor be enough to qualify? Must the prime sub, or subcontractor approve a minimum number of employees live in Lompoc? These are all kind of policy questions that would have to be worked out. What kind of documents would the contractor need to provide to qualify? So, it, it could get a little bit complicated. So, the recommendation is to direct staff to either prepare a policy and return for more discussion, or not prepare a local hire policy for public projects, or to take further action, or take other action, I guess is what we have on here. And I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, do we have anything in our policy right now to encourage local hires?
Yes. The, our purchasing code has, there is an incentive based for materials purchases, non, non-construction projects. We have a, a system of giving some incentives based on local, local preferences. And I'm not, I'm not an expert on that side of the, the procedures, but I know that there is some incentive given for material purchases.
Is there anything in the wording that we, I mean, as you submit your bid, we encourage, we encourage you to look at hiring local subs, is there any wording in there? Not, not, we're not talking about any bonuses right now?
Right, right. No, there's nothing specific to that in our specs right now. Many of our contracts are bid by union contractors, and presumably, you, if you're from an out-of-town contractor, and you come into Lompoc, and you're a union contractor, you'd go to the union hall, and you'd, you'd get whatever they're providing. Maybe they're in Lompoc, maybe they're not. So, that's kind of the, the only thing I can think of in terms of what we got right now. We don't have any type of incentives or language that encourages them.
Okay. And then the last question I have for you, if we were to send this back to you, to come back with another plan, what, what do you think the possibility of coming, we said, go back and really study it hard, come back to us with some plan that we can do something to give some sort of an incentive or bonus to local bidders, but we don't want to take anything out of general fund? What are your chances of coming back to us with something? I mean, really working hard? With all the brains and expertise you have in your department, and our city attorney, with everything, his years of experience, is there, is there any chance you come back with anything?
Well, sure.
Okay, good. Okay, that's the answer I want.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to understand a little bit how you did the calculation. You're talking about, based on 2010, 2011, that if we were to have an incentive program, it would have cost the city approximately $300,000, right?
Yes, based on a 3%.
Based on the 3%, it would cost the city $300,000. And that was based, that's assuming that every contract that the city awarded to the lowest bidder would have gotten that 3%.
Yes, that's a good clarification, thank you.
Because it has to be the lowest bidder.
That's right, that's right. It would, if they qual, you're right. Assuming all of them qualified, the maximum we would have spent was 309, so that's probably a better way of saying it.
Now, you see these contracts all the time. Does the lowest bidder always comes really low, 10%, 20% below the next one, or no? I just want to get an idea of, if we were to add, let's say, supposedly add this additional 3% onto that low bid, what would that do to the competitive process with the other bidders coming in? Is it, is it going to put that bid at a higher than the next higher guy up, or what? You know what I'm saying?
Right.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. There are many times that the bids are within 1% of each other, the low and the second low.
Okay.
So, 3%, especially on a larger, it really depends on the size of the project. A million-dollar project to be 3% apart is a large, it's a pretty big, big difference. That'd be $300,000.
So, then what happens to the process? If all of a sudden, by bumping a bid with a 3% bonus, it doesn't become the low bid anymore, correct?
Through, through the mayor, no. It still stays the low bid, because if, if you were to give it to the second lowest bidder, they'd also get the 3% increase. So, it, it balances itself out, because you're still going with the low, you're awarding based on a low bid.
I see. Okay.
The way I probably see it working is, you'd have to prove that you met the, the requirements through the course of the project, so you'd get the bonus at the end, and maybe, maybe they wouldn't qualify. So, I don't know that it's guaranteed that they would get it. It's, they would have to do the work necessary to qualify, and if they did, then they would get the bonus. So, it, it wouldn't happen upfront, is the way kind of I see that working.
Right. And my next question is the logistics that you sort of inferred to, but we're not very specific regarding how do we enforce this policy, and, and what are the terms? Is that something that you guys have given any more thought, or?
Well, to be honest, we are looking for some direction from council on how complicated you want to make this. No, we, the questions that we had before us were questions that we don't feel like, they're policy questions. They're not necessarily questions that I think we should, we can present you with some options if, if you'd like, but, no, we couldn't, we couldn't find a model that is exactly what you wanted, so it would be kind of starting from scratch.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. This may sound like a silly question, but did we engage in conversation with any of the contractors, and run this idea just past them, just if they have heard of it before, what their reaction was to it, what the likelihood would be of them to even be interested in something like this?
To be interested in a bonus? No, we, we didn't talk to them about whether they would be interested in that. And that's one of the questions that we have on there, is, it's a balance of, you want to give enough of a bonus that it makes it worthwhile for them, but not too much that you're overpaying. And that's, that's kind of one of the number-two question on there. And so, if, if we were going to move forward with it, that would be a key question, is what's, what's fair, what's, not fair, what's appropriate? And it may be different for different-sized projects, that's, there would be a lot of, a lot of work to figure that out.
I definitely understand that as, as a challenge. I, I guess my thinking behind this is, one of the key players at the table is whether or not the, is the contractor, and whether or not they're willing to buy into this idea at all. So, this may be all for naught, if ultimately, the contractor decides whatever requirement we place on it is not worth that 1%, 2%, or 3%. So, I was just curious, and I was also curious, which I'm assuming we don't have the information, is, it says, three of the six projects use local contractors. Do we know why the other three did not? Is it usually cost associated, or do we have any idea why those other three contractor did not use local?
Yeah. The, since there was no incentive in there, it was, I'm sure, based on cost, or sometimes it's just based on who they're familiar with working with, you know, they're, they have their team that they like to work with, and as long as they're competitive, and they like to keep the team together.
Okay. And I do have one last question, and again, my apologies if this is a silly question. Instead of paying a local hire bonus, is there any way to waive any kind of fee implemented by the city instead?
I'm sure that the council has the option to waive fees in some cases.
Right. Because what I'm, almost immediately reject the idea of a general fund cost, so I'm thinking of, you know, what can we do that would eliminate that, but would still maintain this idea? So, the only other thing I can think of is waiving fees, so I just wanted to put that out there, that it is an option for council. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
One of the concerns I have here is, you've listed two hours per week to administer the program. If we didn't have this, what would you be doing the other two hours, I guess? You know, we're looking at $10,000 here, we're looking at $1,500 there, that we want to take out of the general fund for the two hours of staff to do this, and I, I think that this is something we could waive.
We would, you want to, you don't want me to answer the question, or no?
I think not.
Was that a question?
I, I think, I think it was a comment, not a question. Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Councilmember Costa had an interesting scenario, waiving some fees, but wouldn't waiving fees, wouldn't that come out of our general fund as well? Because that's money that would not be put into the general fund, so it's...
I believe in some cases, but my, possibly not in other cases, so I think it's just something to also consider.
I think it's something we should look at, yeah, it's a good idea.
Don't go away. City attorney and I had a discussion prior to the meeting with perhaps a slightly different view with, with regard to a local labor, what'd you describe it? Local labor, good faith effort.
Good faith effort.
Yeah. And this was with regard to something that came from Lancaster, but we talked about it with regard to a general law city. Lancaster happens to be a charter city. I'm going to characterize what you said, and then I want you to say, if I, if I got it right, that because a local hiring measure is voluntary, and it asks you to go through a process, but if you get to the end of the process... a process, but if you get to the end of the process, you're free to go do what it is that you would normally do anyway. So, it's just a good faith effort, that that would be something that we could do even though we're a general law city. Did I get that pretty close to right?
That's true. It all depends on what the things are that they have to do to make it over the goal line.
Right. And so, what got me going down this road was, I was out looking at other cities and the one that came, really kind of jumped out at me was the one from the city of Lancaster, which, or, or city of Palmdale, which happens to be that charter city. But they, they said in their findings, the city council and the city of Palmdale finds and declares as follows, unemployment rates in Palmdale have been consistently higher than in California as a whole. That's us. Statistics indicate that the higher unemployment level in the city of Palmdale correlates to a higher number of families living in poverty and to higher crime rates. Number C, due to a lack of local jobs, approximately 32% of the workforce residing in the city of Palmdale is forced to commute long distances to find work. Because of the lack of local jobs, number D, many residents of the Antelope Valley must leave for work very early in the morning and return late in the evening, often leaving children and teenagers alone and unsupervised during the hours between school and when the parents return from work. Number E, absentee parents or, and unsupervised youth can result in increased problems for families. So, I guess what I, what I'm saying is that what they, what they found are kind of the same issues that we found, and they have some more findings. And then they, they had a very in-depth ordinance, and I would just like to distribute this to the council. I didn't bring enough for everybody because I don't think we can even consider it because it wasn't on the agenda, but I think it's something we could give to the staff to look at and have a, have an opportunity for them to weigh in on this as a viable alternative. The next one is actually from the one that...
That's all you have?
Yeah, did I come up short? I can make more later. The next one is, is a report I pulled off from the city of Santa Cruz, a council agenda report. And what I found interesting with it was that in the back of it, it listed all of the cities that currently have some form of incentive and the percentages. So, it would give us an idea what other people are doing, and it's kind of a, some statistical information to give to the staff that might assist them in looking at alternatives. And what it showed was kind of a widespread, anywhere from 1% to 15%. And then the last one kind of goes in a different direction, and this is something I got from the county of Santa Barbara. And I didn't realize within our ordinance that we had a purchasing preference for local businesses for non-public projects, but for tangible property. The county of Santa Barbara has had that for a number of years. And in talking with Mark Mason from the county purchasing department, he said that their goal originally was to reach 60% of purchases were purchased local, and last year they reached that, and they're on par for it again this year. It's been about a 10-year program. And he commented that on about $85 million in purchases, this has typically cost the county only about $10,000 a year. And his comment was that it'd been a, a good effort, a good tool for recruiting local vendors who generally frequently won the bids anyway. So, there was no additional, there was no additional cost to the county, and what it actually did was bring more people in, more locals in to bid. And he recommended their program highly. I don't know how it compares to what we do, but it would surely be something worth the staff looking at as a, as a successful program that has worked in the county. I think we're all concerned about the amount of money that we would, we would have to take from the general fund for some of these projects, but I, I think we need to quantify the information because if, if a local contractor was the low bidder, then he wouldn't be entitled to the incentive. So, we would need to take those out of the mix. And obviously, we wouldn't take a $90 million sewer plant and put it into the mix. It would be more for projects within a given price range. And then I think Kevin answered the question that there, there would be an opportunity where that could make the difference between a local bidder and a non-local bidder. And kind of looking at the county's results, it hasn't cost them a great deal of money, so I think it's at least worth a look. And that's my input on this subject. I think I covered everything. Yeah, we're going to go to public comment now, but I wanted to pass these things out and talk about them before I went to public comment. Okay, Kevin. Thank you. And now, who's out here in the public that would love to come and talk about this?
Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting for the person to come up, I had a question just so that I'm sure I understand. The last thing you handed out was not public contract related, it was purchasing.
Public purchasing, yes. Mm-hmm. It was strictly purchasing. No, this was contracting, I think. I don't know. I, I only pulled it because I had the chart at the back. That was just the purpose of it.
My apologies for public comment. I'd just like to clarify this really quickly in case there is a comment associated. Marilyn, with this city of Santa Cruz, the...
That was purchasing.
That had to be purchasing because Lompoc is listed as giving a local preference at a 2%.
Okay.
So, that was city of Santa Cruz that you passed out was purchasing. City of Santa Barbara, or, excuse me, Santa Barbara County was purchasing. So, really, the local hire preference was the city of Palmdale that you passed out, ordinance number 1334.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I commend you for trying to make some type of effort, but there may be some lower fruit that is not in the size and magnitude that you're discussing, but in, in any event, for a small business owner, might make a difference. And I know that there's an amount, I recall last year that you voted to increase the minimum for discretionary bids, I believe, for work under 30,000. And I know in the past, I saw on the city's website, that you actually solicited for smaller contractors and workers to be, to be put on a list so that when these discretionary projects came in, that the city would be able to call from this list of local people to do that. And so, I would just encourage you to, to push that. You know, the, these are smaller amounts, but to the small businessman, the local small businessman, that, you know, $30,000 discretionary contract might mean the difference of keeping the employee for that month or not. So, that's one avenue that you might consider.
Thank you. Who's next?
Will Skyla, live in Lompoc, mayor and council. I'm glad you brought this up. It was something that was on my radar when I had the opportunity to be on the city council. When we started discussing with staff, one of the first things that came up was the gift of public funds. They hold that in pretty high regard, I guess, in the legal circle, so. But the city of Lompoc, we, we did add one thing to the lowest bidder. I believe it does say local responsible bidder. You don't have to take the low bidder because they may not be the person that you want. But I think the city was changed it to responsible bidder. In order to staff bids come in and they know this company is unable to, to perform or something of this nature, that, that you can take the next bid up. So, another that we instituted was if the company is going to pay the sales tax on the goods that are used in the project, that they would get a 1% credit. Because we know when the sales tax is paid, 1% of that sales tax comes back to the city. So, there was a 1% initiative there. What I would like, why I want, like to see something worked out is the fact that we have local business people, I'll just put it all in, in one basket, that have their business here. They're sole sourced on their water, sole sourced on their electricity, their refuse, their waste there. We have no chance to go out and bid for so many gallons of water a year. And so, a lot of these businesses are supporting us, the city, through their utilities and stuff from a sole source. And then, when the city goes to have something done, they end up with a, getting a contractor from some other city or something. And it just always never did sit well with me. So, I'm glad, I'm hoping there's something can be worked out here. Call it economic development or, or a thank you for living in Lompoc or something, but at least, attorney sounded at least interesting on it. Time that I served, the city attorney that was serving at that time just had no way that it ever happened. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. I just want to give another option.
Aim.
Michael Lopez, thank you very much, sorry. Local 114 plumbers and pipe fitters. Something that seems to be very near and dear to your heart is to avoid spending money. It seems to be very attractive. There is another tack that can be taken. What has been my experience is, there's a portion of my work that's called labor compliance, where I take my union hat off and simply go into prevailing wage job environment and simply look for labor compliance infractions. Generally, my experience is, these are mostly the people that are not from this area. People who are not from this area don't have a vested interest to maintain their good name in the community. They simply don't care. They're here to make their money and get out of town. Any efforts that you can make as a community to make labor compliance an issue that is easier to effectively engage in is going to benefit you. Right now, we're working with the, several of the building trades in this area are working with Santa Barbara County just to try to work accessibility to get into job sites to be able to do effective labor compliance. This is not a union versus non-union situation, it's simply labor compliance. We use a Department of Transportation forms, a simple questionnaire. It takes one to two minutes to go talk to an employee on a job site, and most municipalities simply don't have the funds to get people out into the field to see who's actually doing the work. If that isn't happening, you're not going to know what you get. Somebody can simply apply for payroll records and whatever, and any of these companies that have been around the block more than a year or two know how to fill out these things and falsify documentation. You have no idea what's happening in the field. So, I encourage you to engage in a little bit of effort to look at maybe something that might actually help you not cost you any dough, and it will definitely serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Robert Schmidig. I'm a local here in Lompoc now. I'm also a retired electrical contractor. I've owned CB Electric since 1982. I am non-union, always have been. The, the prevailing wage things that a lot of cities put out, they base that on union wages, and it keeps small contractors, like I'm a C-10. The aim, well, it started with Gray Davis, actually. He put into effect, he, he assigned a bunch of people from the IBEW, the Electrical Workers' Union, to the Contractor State License Board. And they've chipped away at it to the point where now just a journeyman electrician would have to have a license, licenses as, that rated as high as mine, where when I got into this trade many years ago, I was responsible for the people working that job. I trained my own people. They worked for me. I stood responsible for any wire nut they put on. And, and the electrical contractor still does, but now he's got to find people who can pass these tests, written exams. It was funny, I, when I, I sat there for eight hours in Pasadena when I took my test, and I found that very little of that applied to what I was doing in the field or what went on in my office. But it was a test you had to pass, so you studied and you passed it. You got to watch out for prevailing wage requirements, and anytime you let organized labor be part of your community government, you're looking for trouble when they're, they're just going to put out, they're going to put little contractors out of business as fast as they can. I remember when I, when I tried to join a union once, they told me I was too old, I should get out of the trade. I was working for Jeffrey A. Brooks Electric at the time, wiring the Crocker Bank in Manhattan Beach. I was, I was the foreman on the job. And they were on strike, but we had an open gate. And I said, "Well, okay, I'll leave. I'm the only one that can read the plans here. What do you say?" And they said, "We'll give you journeyman PE book four." Well, that's a guaranteed unemployment trip if you become a union member. They wouldn't even let me be an apprentice because I was too old. You know, I'm not, I'm not against unions, but I, I would ask, I would admonish the council to be very careful about how you deal with this, with your locals. One of the big problems we have here that I looked at when I first came here, I actually thought about starting up again, is you, you do have a shortage of skilled labor within the valley. Well, in my trade, we do. I've talked to people, and I've seen the work that's been done. But that's why you have city inspectors. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll close, close public comment and come back to the council.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. City Attorney Panoni, can you speak to the issue brought forward in public comment by Mr. Skyler in regards to what he discussed?
The gift of public funds issue? The staff reported indicated that in looking at the idea of paying an additional incentive, if you will, as long as there's a public purpose being served, the city council has authority to expend public money. Only when there isn't a public purpose would there be a gift of public funds. And in my estimation, the fact that you'd be keeping money that you're spending on people that spend money otherwise in the community, help economic development in the community, and help residents in the community would be a sufficient public purpose to meet the gift of public funds criteria.
Thank you.
And I would think that's probably what that rather long preamble in the Lancaster ordinance is about, is to establish the value of that. Are there any other questions at this time? I think perhaps this is the, kind of, the first round with regard to the staff, and I would like to, if it's acceptable, the council, let them take the information they received here this evening. And I would also ask them to look at one other thing. It's been brought to my attention that with regard to some projects where the first criteria is the most responsible bidder, that frequently when a large business comes in from out of the area with a large presentation, a local contractor, be it an architect, an engineer, really has no opportunity to successfully bid it. And in the case of some facets, no local contractor has won in quite a number of years because they were viewed as not responsive enough in comparison to the much larger contractor from out of the area. And perhaps our public works director could give some thought to revising those guidelines to allow local contractors to receive equal consideration. Maybe that can't be done, but at least take a look at it and see if that's something that we could do. And then ask the city attorney and the public works department and the purchasing department to review the suggestions here this evening. One of my concerns has been that when I read the disbursement for purchases from the city of Lompoc that I sign after every council meeting, there are very, very few that are purchased in Lompoc. And I'm familiar with some of the vendors we're buying from and what they sell, and there are businesses here in Lompoc that could supply that, but for whatever reason, never have. And I was really encouraged by the comments from the gentleman at Santa Barbara County who said he'd be more than happy to talk to the, the city about, you know, implementing what's worked for them. That what he, what it really did more than pay out money was it empowered local businesses to come in and get involved, and the cost at the end of the year to the county was very minimal. And if, if, if you did it proportionally, it's probably a couple thousand bucks with us. And all of those are simply added to the, the bid, if you will, in terms of what department it comes out of. So, that looks like it has some potential. And just ask that the staff take a look at these alternatives and come back to us with some more ideas. And if you see something else along the way that makes sense to you, you know, you got a carte blanche from my standpoint. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're sending it back to staff for some recommendations, I'd like to throw a little extra into the mix, just a small little thing. In addition to... to the attempt at hiring locally, I would, or using local employment, I'd like to see if we can incorporate the use of somehow some sort of a bonus for using veterans. There's a national effort right now to promote veteran employment right now, so if we can put a little bit something in there with an incentive or a bonus for possibly using veterans. If you're making all the calculations right now, an extra half percent, one percent, whatever you want to come up with, if it's a percentage of veterans on the job, I'd like to see that in there as well.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but were you aware the city of Palmdale is a charter city?
They are a charter city, and as a result of that, I spoke to the city attorney about it, and with the concept of, I've lost it, the word again.
Good faith effort?
Good faith effort. A general law city can conduct a good faith effort, require a good faith effort to be conducted in the same way that a charter city can. And, you know, I'm not saying that this Palmdale ordinance is perfect. I'm surely not a legal expert. It just, when I read it, it hit a lot of chords with me, and I thought it was a good one for the staff to look at.
Yeah, I think it's great. You know, unfortunately, because we're general law, we can't take most of this, but that good faith effort, that would be something that could be added at sort of a no-cost, like a staff time basis. But I still believe staff, even though we're sending this back, I still believe they want some direction on the four questions placed in the staff report. Is that correct? So, I would like city council to briefly discuss those four questions. It's difficult without having options to kind of come up with certain things out of the blue, so I was just curious if council had any discussion about those four items.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question just for clarification?
Absolutely.
If, from my understanding of the questions, we don't need answers to those questions if the council isn't interested in doing the bonus incentive, the percentage bonus incentive. So, if you're still interested in doing that, then yes, we should need to get answers to the questions. If you're not interested in doing that, then we don't.
Well, from my standpoint, I'm surely interested in investigating this. I think we have to have a top and a bottom. So, an amount, a contract below a certain amount, it wouldn't have a substantial impact, and I think the staff is probably able to determine that, and we would need to have a top because above a certain point, we simply couldn't afford it, and that would be the unusual contract rather than the usual contract. So, for instance, for a million-dollar paving project, we probably wouldn't be interested in that. I don't think there's a paving company in the valley that would be able to do that project anyway, so I think we would rely on the staff to say, "Well, you know, within this product range, or within this dollar range are the bulk of the bids." Does that seem reasonable to everybody?
Have some comments?
No, I'm sorry. I don't know who is next. Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my difficulty with all of this is that I am not really certain why is it that we are awarding, according to this report, about 50% of the projects in the year 2010 to 2011 were awarded to contractors that did not use any local labor. Is that a fair statement to say?
The point the staff report was trying to make was without any incentive at all, 50% of our awards
Right.
had at least one contractor located in, one subcontractor located in the city of Lompoke, with an address in the city of Lompoke. That's all we were trying to say.
Right, but the point here is
So presumably, there's some sort of local employment going on with those local contractors.
But the point is, is that the city, and this is what I'm trying to get at, the city's awarding contracts to outside contractors. Those outside contractors are hiring people from the outside, more so than they're hiring people from, no, 50% of them had one subcontractor.
No, I'd like to clarify that. Larry Bean, Public Works Director. There's two completely different issues here. Most of you have been discussing, and what Kevin has in his report, about the 50%, that's a contractor with a Lompoke address. That contractor might not hire a single citizen of Lompoke, of the city of Lompoke. Everybody hires may be out of a union hall in Santa Maria, and they work in Santa Maria, live in San Yen. It's two different things. We could put together an incentive program based on the people that actually worked on the project. We would look at the same list that the gentleman from the electrical union talked about, the reports they give us every week about the wages that they paid. That is a completely different issue than looking for a percentage of contractors. For instance, the heating and air conditioning contractor at the library, he's local, he's always been local, longtime company, probably most of his employees live in Lompoke, and there's a high percentage for that one. One of the other projects that Kevin lists may have a contractor from LA, but he may have come up here and was able to hire several people. So, we could have two completely different programs.
So, what I'm trying to get at is, just tell me why we're not hiring people from Lompoke?
We have, we have no tools to enforce or make anyone hire somebody from Lompoke.
I understand that, but I want to know, business-wise, why do these contractors or the unions, whatever, end up hiring people from outside of Lompoke? And the point is, is are we going to solve the problem by putting a bonus? I mean, I want to understand whether that would solve the problem that we're trying to solve, which is to provide labor for the people that live here, right?
If, for one of the gentlemen that came up from the electrical union, well, he wasn't electric, his private business, he was non-union, all right, he talked about there was a shortage of expert electricians to hire in the Lompoke Valley. So, if the job involves a particular trade, and there's no people in Lompoke that have that trade, they're not going to, or skills, they're not going to be able to hire them.
So, the bonus won't do anything. In that particular example, the bonus won't do anything because you're basically saying that people
I can't say yes or no, whether it will or it won't.
Well, to be able to establish a policy that works, we have to understand what is it that is going to work. Otherwise, why would we set up something that is not going to do anything?
One of the things that Kevin and Larry are saying is, what is it we want to accomplish? Do we want to have the individual human beings providing, actually doing the work, living here, or do we want to have the contractor's business in Lompoke? If it's the former, then we need to draft a program that says, "To get the bonus, you need to have so many people
Right.
on your payroll, whoever payroll, or if it's the contractor," it's a different scenario that we'd be looking at.
I understand, and I'm trying to understand what is happening today. Is it that local, local folks are not being hired, or is it
We don't have the economic research to prove or disprove why they're being hired or not being hired.
So, we cannot answer that, basically, you're saying. We cannot answer that. So, if we're going to look at this problem, we're going to have to have two things. We're going to have to answer those two questions. Are we going to have a policy where we want contractors here, or are we going to have a policy where we require, or both, where we require that the people that are actually working are Lompoke residents?
I mean, one simple one that came to my mind
Right, right.
when we were, Kevin and I spent a couple weeks talking about contractors or hiring, is you could have an incentive based on what salaries were paid to people that lived in the 93436 ZIP code, and they have to submit to us their weekly sheets that show what they paid, and if they paid out through the whole project, $100,000 in salaries to people in Lompoke, you might make some kind of estimate that they spend 50% of that money in Lompoke, and 8% of it goes to local taxes, and you come up with a formula that you pay the contractor the bonus on. And that doesn't matter if it's
Right.
a contractor that lives in Lompoke, or he hires people
You know, and you just brought up a very good point. I mean, it's a good idea. Maybe that's what it needs to be, and it needs to be very analytical, and it needs to be sort of the same. It doesn't matter what contractor, what project, it is that simple. There is this many, this much money that was used in the payroll to local residents, and based on that, there is a bonus associated with it, period. I think that idea is great, you know, very simple to implement. It's fair. You don't have to account what project, who, and what business, or whatever, right?
Correct.
Councilmember Martner, I'm, sorry, Councilmember Lingel.
I believe Councilmember Martner's question sort of answered, question answered my scenario as well. So, I believe what I'm hearing from you, Councilmember Martner, is that you're more interested in people working here than where the contractor is from. So, I agree with that. It's
Absolutely. I think that the idea is to put money in our residents' pockets so they can spend it in town.
So, I agree with that.
One more question would be, do they need to be new jobs, or can they be jobs that already existed prior to their awarding? That's, I heard a couple times people talk about they wanted to create new jobs, and that would be kind of a twist to it.
You're talking about current employees of the existing contractor?
Yeah.
That lived in Lompoke already?
Yeah, if you said that they had to be brand-new jobs for this contract, that could be a little difficult.
No, I don't think that's our goal. Our goal is to employ local people, whether they're currently employed or they're added on. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. I agree with the idea that there needs to be some staggered benefit in that you're setting a floor but not a ceiling, so the more individuals that you're hiring, the higher that incentive is, whether it's a bonus or the waiver of fees. So, I agree, I think that that's a fabulous idea, because then it's not, they're just trying to make that 50%, you know, and they're within one, but they may hire more for that reason, that they'll get more benefits. So, I think that that's a fabulous idea, and of course, I'm on the same vein that we're really looking at the local employees and not just the contractor subcontractor. But I didn't hear council say whether that would, that individual, or there would be benefit associated with the contractor subcontractor being in Lompoke as well, or are we taking that out of the equation and just looking at the local employee number?
The comment has been many times that because of the people we deal with that are local contractors, that we tend to, they understand what we want, and they deliver quality work that's what we expect versus out-of-the-area contractors that sometimes don't deliver quality work or don't understand what we want, and therefore, it's more problematic to have quality, the work of the quality we're looking for delivered. Have you, do you think there's any credence to that?
We've had very good contractors from inside and outside of Lompoke, and some trouble from inside and out. It doesn't, I don't see any generalities that apply to both.
Okay, well, I think what I'm hearing most of the council say, and you guys can all nod up and down, is that we're more concerned about where the workers come from than where the contractor comes from, because that's where the bulk of the dollars go.
That was the whole purpose of it, right there, local employment.
Okay. Are there any other questions you want to ask us, or did we kind of get it nailed down a little bit for you?
No, that helps.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, you know, if it takes two more rounds, don't feel like you have to come with the perfect answer the next time.
So, Marilyn, in regards to question one, what size project should receive a bonus? I think that the general consensus was that there should be a minimum number, size of the project, and a maximum number. So, if you guys can come up with that and bring that back to us, I think that that would be the most beneficial.
We don't want to go down to projects that are so small, the paperwork exceeds the value of the project, and we don't want to have projects so large that we couldn't afford to pay the bonus.
Want a comprehensive process that would include all funding sources?
I think there's a difference between federal and state contracting, which has one set of criteria. Then there's our own local contracting, which has probably similar criteria, except the way the bonus would be paid would be from the account, and then local purchasing is another whole look, and maybe chatting with Santa Barbara County and working with them on what's been successful for them. I don't think we need to invent any wheels.
Just to be clear, I don't think the federally funded projects, we would be able to pay the bonus out of the federal funds.
No, we'd have to pay it from our own funds.
Right, but I heard at least one council member say that they weren't interested in the general fund paying any bonuses. Is that what you want as a council, or do you want us to not do that?
Why don't you kind of look at what, what that project, maybe the project threshold is different for those projects? You know, what can we afford to do?
Okay.
And you have an idea of kind of where the projects go. I know I'm not interested in paying a bonus on a million-dollar project, but if you came back and said, "You know, we've got a bunch of these $50,000 projects that are more locally competitive," that would probably be a lot more interesting, because $1,500 is a little easier to come up with than $30,000. Councilmember, I have no idea. You know, Councilmember Lingel, you keep pointing to them, but I'm going to let you go first this time.
Just to clarify, I believe I was the council member you were speaking about that was not interested in using general funds. It's not, I'm not excited about using general funds, is what I'm trying to say, but I'm not completely opposed to it if we come up with a good program, okay? I'd rather have you come up with a wonderful program that does not use general funds. I realize that's highly unlikely, but do the best you can.
Who's next?
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I think he was also referencing to me, because I would almost entirely be against taking any money from the general fund at this point. While we're furloughing our own employees, we can hardly sustain the employment of those employees, yet, you know, attempt to get other folks employed. So, I would almost exclusively be against that. That's why I'm talking about that fee waiver issue, and I understand there is some link, but possibly what I may be interested in is a little bit of both, where certain levels, you get a bonus. If you're below that, maybe there's certain fees. So, if we can look at, you know, sort of, what are the ways besides, you know, cash bonus from the general fund, I would really appreciate that. And then what I wanted to do is, I wanted to make sure that you had all of those four policy questions answered and answered clearly before you went off, because I didn't know if you had a consensus at this point, or do you feel that you did get all four questions answered?
I think we have enough to come back with another set of questions probably for you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martner?
I want to, I guess, talk about the, you know, waiving the fees to look at particularly those that would go into the general fund, even though it's just a soft way to say we're not taking money out of the general fund, we're just not putting any money in, okay? That's basically what it's saying. But I think it needs to be looked at, because probably those will be tied up to all of those softer projects, like the library projects and those things like that, CDBG and so forth, not necessarily the public work side of it. But I just want to encourage you to take a look at those, even though it might not be a favorable thing to do.
Yeah, the typical fees I can think of would be water meter installation fees. There's a business tax receipt that contractors have to pay. So, there'd be building permit fees. So, those are, there is a range of fees that not every project would have, but they're, they do come up in, as a part of the project, and we can, we can include those in the policy.
What about impact fees?
No, we don't pay impact fees in our own projects.
Got it.
Okay, any other questions? So, the attorney, you have a, nope, you're good. Larry, anything else?
I'd like to clarify one comment from one of the speakers, that was Nick, on projects below $30,000. We do have lists of local contractors, and I could say without a doubt, our street crews, when we need to round up a local contractor to repair a long stretch of sidewalk, put in many wheelchair ramps, et cetera, 90 to 99% of those go to local contractors in Lompoke. Those aren't on your list. The numbers that Kevin compiled were the ones that were put out to bid larger projects. So, we do, in fact, give work to local contractors that are doing concrete work and smaller building projects. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else, Kevin? Okay, that concludes that item, and we'll move on to item seven, and Water Superintendent Jean Markham.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, and citizens of Lompoke. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting agenda item number seven, irrigation well water for parks and schools. My name's, oh, I'm Jean Markham, the water superintendent. First with me is Ron Stassi, he's our utility director, and then also with us tonight is Thomas Holloman from Lee and Row. A little background on how we got here. About a year ago, the mayor came up with a good idea to try to save money for the parks and the schools, and he, the council And he, the council accepted his proposal to look at that project. During the budget session, May 9th, 2011, the utility staff proposed to have a consultant assist the staff in studying the proposal. At that time, the study was going to be about $9,400. So the council wanted us to take another crack at it, see if we could come up with a solution without having to spend that money. The staff findings, we investigated some local and outside agency irrigation wells. The local wells that we looked at were from Stone Brook. It was a housing project that had irrigation well. We have Riverbend Park. We also have River Park and then Ken Adams Park. Stone Brook and Ken Adams are no longer using the irrigation wells, but the Riverbend and River Park are still using those. Also, I spoke with Unified School Districts from Atascadero, San Luis, and Santa Maria. And they do have irrigation wells at those schools, and they're somewhat successful and they're happy with those. But they either had lack of data to supply us, or they weren't comparable with, exactly with what the city council was looking for with our situation. So in all these examples with the schools, the school districts paid for and operated the irrigation wells. So that was the big difference. We didn't have anything comparative because this was going to be a different scenario. Also, we looked at the legal issues and we explored the city codes and the water rights. And the schools, there was a way for the schools to drill those wells on their property. So those were looked at. Now, the most important impacts, we noted that schools and the parks use 4.5% of all the water, and that represents 3.9% of our revenue. It's approximately $268,000. So that's a pretty big number that we have to deal with. So therefore, the economic study is needed for proper evaluation. And the main question is, how would we pay for these irrigation well systems? So the council action. On October 18th, 2011, the utility staff presented its irrigation wells report. And the council again directed staff to continue studying the feasibility of using the irrigation water. And the council approved commission of a less expensive feasibility study. And that one was about $6,944. So it was approximately $2,500 less than the first time. So we were able to get a more concise study and for a better price. By January 2012, we had the complete study. It's the onsite untreated groundwater feasibility study. So the staff report, we concluded that in general, it's more cost-effective to use city water, although Ryan Park and Lompoc High School could have cost savings there. So by doing the study, at least we were able to see there was a couple places that might benefit from an irrigation well. Currently, at this time, the city's water division, utility division, there's no funding available in the current budget for a project like this. Also, Ron and I met on February 16th. We met with the superintendent of schools and two of their staff members. We gave them a copy of the report. And we also gave them an opportunity to show up here tonight to see if they were interested in continuing the project. And they declined, but they said that they agreed with us on the numbers. In fact, they liked the study. And the main reason is the cost was probably something that they were hesitant on. And they noticed that one of their staff had already been studying the irrigation well subject. And he said that some of those wells were exceeding the 50,000 that we had in our study, so they're closer to 70,000 per irrigation well. So now I'll bring up Tom Holloman from Lee and Row, and he'll explain a little bit further on how he got his numbers.
Thank you, Jean. My name is Tom Holloman. I'm a managing engineer with Lee and Row Consulting Engineers. We've been a 30-year engineering, full-service engineering firm now here in Southern California. In fact, one of our earliest projects was in fact the wastewater treatment plant here in Lompoc, which is now being redesigned by somebody else, but that's beside the point. Different subject for a different night. We were intending to take a look at the feasibility of developing local irrigation wells at several school and park sites. Here you can see on the slide the list of schools we evaluated, elementary up through high school, and a variety of different parks. What we essentially did is I turned my mechanical electrical engineers loose, and we went out and actually visited every single one of the school sites and park sites, looking for three things. First of all, approximate location or reasonable location for irrigation wells. We looked for them in places kind of out of the way where the kids wouldn't run over them. Then we then had to go back and connect those into the electrical services as well as connect them back into the existing water connection points. So in each site, you have a well, you have conduit running from the electrical transformer out to the well to power it, and then a pipeline back from the well to the point of connection to the existing system. Those are the facilities. One of the assumptions, key assumptions in every installation was that the electrical panel that currently exists would have enough power to power the well as well as the school or the park complex without additional transformer costs. We also took a look at each site in terms of what the potential water use would be. And Miggalito Elementary School is a good example of when you look at most of the school sites, only about 65% of the site can actually be converted to this auxiliary water supply. The rest of the irrigation in and around the school buildings and the actual potable use on the campus would have to remain on the drinking water system. So as you look at how much could be shifted to the new irrigation supply, we discounted it to 65%, which is pretty much consistent with almost all the school sites we've worked with in Southern California. We took a look at the different construction cost categories. We got a cost bid from a local city of Lompoc well driller, AA Construction, for the cost of developing the wells. We sized them based on the amount of water each site required. So there was a difference in cost between one site and the other in terms of the size of the pumps. Each site required electrical pedestal, motor starter to drive the well. The pipeline cost bringing the water back to the point of connection, obviously cost to get the power out to the well. And then irrigation system modifications, as I said before, since not all the sites could be, take the recycle, the auxiliary water supply, you have to actually go in and start chopping up the irrigation system to bifurcate them and make sure only one portion of the system takes the auxiliary water supply, the rest stays unpotable. Those costs are included. On the O&amp;M side, we've included costs for cross connection testing. Once you bring an auxiliary water supply on site, which is what these wells will be considered by the health department, it requires annual cross connection testing to make sure they're not commingled again. Annual O&amp;M costs, annual power costs of the well. We've also included a debt service repayment component in the cost of the O&amp;M, which reflects the shift back from the irrigation water supply. Currently, about 40 cents per billing unit is fixed debt cost service. So we've added back in as an O&amp;M cost to make sure that's kept on the books. And then we included a capital recovery fee, which essentially allows you to recoup the cost of the pump over about a 10-year period. I apologize for the size of the text, but when you add up all the costs, looking at all the different sites, the criteria was simply if the cost of city water was more than the cost of local water on the site, it showed up as yellow. As you can see, two of the sites did. Lompoc High School and Ryan Park showed, met the criteria where the cost of city water was higher than the local water supply if it was developed at each site. The bounces sites did not. Some of the assumptions we used, again, the 65% demand for the schools. We originally were going to look at Centennial Park and College Park, but they were just too small, so we dropped them off the list. We did use a local estimate from a local pump supplier. The $60 and $25 per foot for the conduit costs, assume all those conduits are on site, nothing in the street. Once you move off the site into doing street construction, the cost probably goes about $200 a foot for the pipeline costs. The cost of treated water, $1,0198 per acre foot. We took the construction cost and amortized it over 10 years just to have an annualized cost of construction compared against our O&amp;M costs. And then on a couple of sites, Barton Park, Ken Adams, and Briar Creek Park, excuse me, we did not have actual water usage data. We just prorated it based on comparable parks of similar size and complexity. The bottom results of our analysis at this level show that you do have two potential sites that could benefit from this program. The rest don't appear to meet the economic criteria, and we think that those two are the only two that really do meet the criteria. Actually, if you kind of look at it in that perspective, both of those sites have a very, very large landscape area. In the case of Ryan Park, very limited amount would have to be kept out. Almost all that we'd go to the new auxiliary water supply. And Lompoc High School has very large playing fields and large grassy areas that can be converted over to this auxiliary water supply. The rest of them, unfortunately, the sites are just too small to be able to offset the cost of construction, annual O&amp;M costs, to make them cost-effective. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Jean.
Just on a side note, those two possible sites, we don't have any water wells that we use for our production wells in those areas, so we're not really sure exactly what the water quality would be in those areas. There's obviously, most likely, we could find water someplace in those vicinity, but just don't know the quality. As you see the conclusion, this is a summary, just basically, it seems to be in most cases that it's more cost-effective to use the city water. But it's nice, encouraging to know that there might be a possibility that Ryan Park or the high school could have savings with the irrigation study. Again, there's no available funding, but there are options that could provide funding other than budget. And at this time, you know, staff is not planning to do any additional work unless the council is going to direct us to do so. And now I'll go ahead and turn it over for questions.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, can we go back to the cost summary slide? You know what's missing? River Park, the only one that we use a well on. We've done no comparison with it.
It's on an irrigation well system.
That was my point. River Park is on an irrigation well. What would it cost if we were to use city water there? Are we losing money using an irrigation well there now?
When we checked with the park staff, they didn't have any conclusive records to check back on. So it was, we'd have to do more in-depth study on how much they actually spend. Same with maintenance records, they were commingled with other costs. So it was hard to pull apart an exact amount according to the staff there.
Let me answer that question because what got me started down this road was that in 2009, I believe, the well at River Park failed, Riverbend Park failed, and it was out of service for a period of time. And there's a cross connection over there to city water. And their bill for, I won't say I'm positive, but I believe it was 26 days, was like $4,500 bucks as opposed to using well water, which was a tremendous increase. And thankfully, the well was fixed by the time they got the bill. I guess I have some problems with some of these numbers, but, you know, I'll have to do a little more research. I am concerned that in a couple of cases, there were schools and parks co-located. And when I did the study, the savings involved working those two co-located facilities together and putting the pump on one side and coming under the street to the other. There were also some rather dramatic differences from what local contractors quoted me in terms of the cost of installation for some of these. One was, this report indicates that interf piping, so in the grass, would be about $60 a foot, and a local contractor quoted me $3 a foot installed for two-inch. There's also a comment in here about installing in the street and listed $120 a foot. And when I talked to a local contractor about it, he said, oh, you'd never dig up a street. What you do is, you know, you do a loop bore under it. So as an example, to go from Ryan Park to the middle school, you can go under the street rather than cutting it up, and that's $25 worth a foot versus $120 a foot. And today, on my ride to Santa Barbara with Councilmember Lingle, I made a call to a local electrical contractor because I can truly tell you I gundecked the numbers on electrical when I was doing it. And the report here shows $25 a foot for the conduit. And we received a quote from a large electrical contractor in Lompoc at $12 a foot, including number four, four number four wires installed. So, and, you know, I'm not trying to shoot you guys in the head because you work on numbers from other areas, and it may be such a thing that it's less expensive here. From my standpoint, I appreciate the report. It gives me good information. I would really like those slides in color if you could email them to me because in the black and white copy, I can't see where you wanted to put the well and, you know, it's very difficult. And I would be happy to go forward and take this on and do a little more work, expanding on what I learned from you guys. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. So there was no, and actually, I was surprised to see that as well, there was no discussion of co-locating the wells between, for park and school use.
Part of why we didn't do that was twofold. Number one, we were looking at them on a site-by-site basis as opposed to trying to bring them together. Our experience has been that when you start moving onto the street, I have never run into a situation with respect to Mary Lynn's comment, where you can actually jack a conduit underneath the street for $25 a foot. Those numbers are very, very low. Typically, when you go out in the street, our experience has been the cost is significantly higher. The complexity of the system becomes more complicated. Now, you have two systems being operated off the same well, two separate controllers, one single point trying to maintain adequate irrigation pressure from two different systems. The complexity of the system goes up. It's no longer simply a well hooked to the irrigation controller. Now you've got multiple sites off the single well. And that level of complexity was much more than the study envisioned initially. Not that it couldn't be evaluated, it's just that trying to do it at this level and trying to come up with these initial assessment numbers, trying to look at different combinations, was really beyond the scope of this study. But it's been our experience is that as you, as you said, as you start adding sites, you add levels of complexity to drive the cost up significantly.
And the other question that I have is, this is based on a 10-year amortization period for the construction costs, is that correct?
Correct.
So I'm looking at Beatty Park, for example, and I'm seeing that there's a, there is a cost difference, and I do see that, you know, you do have it as a small amount higher, about $2,000, a little less than $1,800. But the consideration that I am thinking of is, I'm trying to be very long-sighted in this. So after that 10-year amortization period is over, that monthly cost then goes down considerably.
Well, that's why I've included in there a capital recovery cost, the idea being you've amortized the construction cost over a certain period of time. You've also got a capital recovery fund running in parallel with it. At the end of 10 years, then, you just simply have the ability to pay for that well again.
I'm sorry, can you point that out? I'm, I think I lost where you're referencing.
In the total construction, the detail, this is a summary sheet out of the report. We have a much larger spreadsheet in the, in the report that breaks it down with every single category. One of those is in fact a capital recovery element in there that allows you then to recoup the cost of that well over that same life of the well. So you're not trying to spike at the very end and buying it all over again. You've actually included that replacement cost in your overall costs.
Understanding that the replacement wouldn't need to take place at the end of those 10 years, though, correct?
Not necessarily. It's not guaranteed at the end of 10 years you'd replace it, but we amortize over 10 years to get an annualized cost for construction as well as be able to develop a component for capital recovery. So if you had a 20-year life, obviously, you'd stretch it out a little bit more. In most cases, we did some sensitivity analysis, and we looked at some of those factors. In most cases, if you look at the spread between the city water and the locally developed water, the amount of money would have to increase to make it shift to being a positive opportunity was so large that it couldn't be overcome by just moving the amortization out to, from 15 to 20 years, per se, making that much smaller difference. It didn't shift it enough the other side. It really gets back down to how much water you can actually sell on anyone given site to, for the revenue side, to offset the cost of capital costs and operation and maintenance. And as you can see, the larger sites, they just have that much more volume, that much more revenue it generates from sales to offset those costs. And you start getting much smaller, like Miggalito Elementary School. In some cases, you're looking something like Briar Creek Park, the total water demand's only 1.5 acre-feet a year. There's just, it's not enough water sales. I do recycle water retrofits as part of my specialty as well, and that's always an ongoing issue where there's a revenue break. You just have to have a certain amount of water sale, a certain size lot, just to make it feasible to move forward. And again, there are those, we do more, as Mary Lynn suggested, more analysis, you may find that opportunity may shift one or more out of those, but most of them didn't.
Okay, so I want to go back and revisit this idea, my apologies, of co-locating. Because that wasn't studied in this particular study, and that's really what I was banking on, that cost savings being the cause of, you know, for example, Ryan Park and Lompoc Valley Middle School are one block away from each other. So that would sort of be, I think, the prime location that we're talking about, especially because Ryan Park- especially because Ryan Park is showing one of the two that's a cost savings. But in your professional opinion, without having done a more in-depth study, you feel that the cost of running two locations on one well?
Well, not just the cost of connecting the two together. And you're talking about a larger well at one location versus two smaller wells. We'd have to look at the combination and see what that would do to the cost numbers. But it's been my experience, as you move into the street, the costs go significantly higher. And directional drilling, HDD directional drilling over traditional open cut, depending on the length and the push and the size, can be as expensive as traditional open cut. They typically don't do that because of traffic impacts, not because it's cheaper. You bore underneath the streets because you don't want to interrupt the traffic, not because it's cheaper necessarily. But each case is different, obviously. We have to look at them on a unique basis, so. I don't discount the local, the local contractor's point of view here as well. Like you said, we, we look at numbers based on our experience on multiple sites. And obviously, the size, the conduit's a big deal, a big difference as well. We're basically assuming four-inch conduit, certain power requirements for the well, based on what we got from the information. Again, we didn't have a design done on this level. This is, these are planning-level numbers.
And Mayor Lynn, do you have any letters from local contractors by any chance?
You know, I spent an hour today looking for the file that deals with this.
Of course.
And it's in a really, really safe place.
Definitely. Thank you.
From my standpoint, Dirk, let me go to you in just a sec. I can't read this one large chart, which would be very helpful, so if you would also be able to either blow it up or cut it in two pieces, that would, that would be great. And, and again, I'm, I'm not being critical of your work, you know, there may be just more than one way to skin a cat, so.
Sure.
And you've provided really good information and a lot of thinking points. And I, I asked staff today if, under California law, we have certain parameters with regard to water, whether or not we would legally be able to carry the water overhead from other projects to this project, or if the overhead that we carried could only be from this project. And the answer is, there's no answer, and that takes some reading, so, you know, we don't want to go to jail either. Councilmember Starbuck?
I'm very curious about the February 16th meeting with the school district. This project was initially brought to us with the joint effort of us and the school district, and so far, it's been a pure city effort that I've seen. Are they just wanting to discontinue this? Is there any interest? Is there expert that said 70 over 50 willing to say anything about it? I mean, I have respect for what these guys do. I mean, they've got 1970 trucks running around still, you know?
It's just the superintendent didn't seem to be that interested on his level. He had the assistant superintendent, who had a little bit more interest, and he was probably going to make the decision. They, they met with their maintenance supervisor after we left. We had about a 20-minute meeting, and we didn't hear back from them. We thought we were going to hear back, so I called them, and they, the maintenance supervisor pretty much, after their meeting, said it was a, they weren't really interested. So we offered them to be here tonight to speak, and they, and they have a copy of the report. And again, that's the response we got.
I think the difference might be, when we had talked about it before, the potential savings was substantially larger, and that was a lot more exciting. And again, that, some of that had to do with co-location. So I think, again, I'd be happy to take the information that they've got and go back and do a little more local research, and I'll, with the sites that have been selected, I'll actually get the local contractors to look at them and give me a little closer number, rather than what we talked about before, which was, we went out and measured distances from where we assumed things would go, and now I think you've supplied a more appropriate placement, so that makes a difference, too. Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also was a little bit surprised that the school districts really had, I mean, for lack of saying it, they've really have no interest in, no interest or very little interest in partnering with us.
They hinted that they had another project going on in another area, obviously not in Lompoc.
Okay. So I think, I think if we pursue this at all, we should probably do it under the assumption that we're going to do it on our own. And, you know, I'm looking at the last, almost the last paragraph in the conclusion, and it indicates that, at present, it's maybe marginal benefits and may merit consideration. So if we want to pursue this, I'd, if we pursue it, I'd rather not put any further money into this.
I agree.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the council?
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation. Well, now that we're done, is there anyone that, any public comment on this? Sorry about that. Seeing none, thank you. Okay, come on back. And we will now have the City of Lompoc Comprehensive Code Enforcement Program from Senior Code Enforcement Officer Steve Boggs. Before we start down that road, I want to, I want to make one little note in the staff report, and it says, "The city council consider a comprehensive code enforcement program as proposed by Mayor Lynn." That's kind of close, but what really I said was, "The city council consider a comprehensive nuisances," Section 17 dot 140 Code Enforcement Program, because that's what this is about, nuisances. It's not about other code enforcement issue. Those, those are not ours. Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Honorable Mayor, and members of the council, I'm Steve Boggs, Senior Code Enforcement Officer for the City of Lompoc. During the December 20th, 2011 city council meeting, you reviewed and discussed a conceptual draft for a code enforcement program labeled Curb, Community Urban Renewal and Beautification, as well as the 2003 Respect Program, Real Effort Serving People's Environment Equals Clean Town. Council approval was requested by Mayor Lynn and received to work with staff to identify properties with obvious weed and debris issues to bolster code enforcement efforts. During public comments after presentation of the December 20th staff report, Bulton Code Enforcement was referenced by citizens and council in regards to what was, to what allowed for swift resolution of their code enforcement cases. Research was performed by staff to determine what tools were used in Bulton to initiate positive responses from alleged violators. Additionally, staff reviewed Santa Maria and Solvay municipal codes to gather additional These communities utilize administrative citations in the event that voluntary compliance cannot be achieved within an established timeframe. It should be noted that the population of Bulton is 5,245 residents. Solvay has 4,828 residents. Currently, the City of Lompoc has no administrative citation process. The population of our community is 42,434 residents. The community, city council, and staff recognize the need for a comprehensive code enforcement program to voluntarily attain our stated goals of addressing matters of life, health, and safety, and maintenance of property values, as well as compliance with adopted codes and ordinances. Staff recommends implementation of educational tools in the form of door hangers, brochures, as well as utilizing the City of Lompoc website to provide the information to our residents regarding how to avoid common violations in conjunction with the Lompoc City Code, which is currently available online. The City of Lompoc Single Family Rehabilitation Loan Program, coupled with assistance from local volunteer organizations, as well as the addition of educational information for our citizens, incorporates the best elements of a positive code enforcement program for our community. The complaint-based system of reporting violations is common in surrounding communities. However, the tool utilized to gain compliance with codes and ordinances once efforts to gain voluntary compliance have been exhausted is the administrative citation. The City of Lompoc currently has no administrative citation procedure. Currently, nuisance abatement in instances where property owners did not voluntarily comply requires a lengthy process, including investigation, notification, city council resolution, additional notification, public hearing, abatement by owner or the city, followed by collection of costs or issuance of liens, if, if the city performs the abatement. Implementation of an administrative citation procedure provides staff with a cost-effective tool while concurrently establishing due process for violators and procedure for appeal when voluntary compliance cannot be achieved. If council directs staff to return with administrative citation tools in addition to the program previously approved with a letter from the mayor regarding weed and debris issues, he is seen. Some recipients of code enforcement actions would receive a letter from the mayor, some would not. Code enforcement actions should be consistent. Therefore, staff requests that mayor and council decide whether the mayor's letter would be sent to all property owners in the code enforcement process or to none. If mayor and council decide that all recipients would receive the letter, some modifications would be made to incorporate this letter into the code enforcement process. Staff recommends the council approve implementation of community education, as well as directing staff to return to council with administrative citation tools similar to those described in the ordinance attached to this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And I'd call the council's attention to attachment number two, 17 dot 140 dot 010, Maintenance of Property Nuisances. And this is the section that this effort is directed toward. This does not involve code enforcement with regard to building and safety issues or illegal construction or any of those things. This effort on, on my part is simply to encourage the folks in the city to cooperate and help us clean the place up. So if you want to take just a second and look through that, and then the last thing I would do is call your attention to attachment number four, which is the draft of a letter that Steve and I worked on together, and that I think is an excellent letter, and I give Steve most of the credit. He came up with the idea, and I came up with a little polishing. And I think it, it exactly does what it is that we're trying to do, and I believe this letter is the one we should use for any of those things that fall under 17 dot 140. If they do not fall under 17 dot 140, we should do what it is that we've always done. And give everybody a moment to read. Okay, let's, Councilmember Lingle is not quite done. You're done reading, Paul? Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Martin.
I agree that the letter should go to all the violators and everybody, not just to specific individuals, so it would have to be sort of like a mass mailing, if you will, I guess, correct? One of the problems that I have found with the voluntary code enforcement is that one person or one individual, one property owner gets, gets a complaint, the city receives a complaint, but there are other property owners nearby or whatever that they have not received a complaint, and therefore, they're not being quote-unquote busted. So, given that we do have a very specific guideline regarding of what a nuisance is, I really think that what needs to happen is that there is a survey done of all the properties that are nuisance, and there is a mass mailing that gets sent out, so there is no one particular one that gets targeted or, or not targeted, and the whole thing gets applied to the whole city. Because if we don't, we're going to go back into the issues of, you know, well, you only got busted because your neighbor complained about it, or because the mayor went by that city street or not another city street, or something of that sort. So, so we're going back to the original problem here. How do we apply this policy uniformly to everybody in a fair way? And if you just want to take one aspect, because this is only one aspect of code enforcement, which is just the visual, I mean, you know, if you read, if you read it, it's, it's pretty obvious, okay? Abandoned buildings, broken windows, abandoned, you know, dishwashers on the front lawn, whatever. I think we got to go and look at all the city. Now, I don't think we or the mayor need to go. I think the staff needs to go and look at this, and basically, go and list all the properties that are under that nuisance, and then send the letter out. That's what I think we need to do. And one small comment regarding the, the letter, there is your last sentence, "If you're unable to correct the nuisance because of financial or health issues, please contact me for assistance." I believe that it should be the city, the one that is contacted for assistance, as opposed to the mayor personally. And that's also just a comment.
Okay, recall that what we, what we voted for last time was that I was, in fact, going to make a trip across the entire city and develop a list of all the properties that had the issues under 17 dot 140, and take a picture as I did that, and then bring those all back, and then generate the, Steve would generate the letters to each of those people, and I'm not sure we would mail the entire batch at one time, but we would at least work neighborhoods together. If it was the council's desire, we could get all the letters done and future-date them and mail them all in a single day, but that might make an awful lot of phones ring, so I think it might be better to send them out in batches, so neighborhoods go out together. And with regard to calling me, no, I'm more than happy to have them call me and, and try to work out something for the very few people that have those issues. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I think Ms. Martner, actually, that was the one sentence that I wanted to address as well, partially for that reason, but for the other one is, how do I want to state this? When you, when you say that there's a service available, I think it's going to be much, possibly overutilized than for the folks who actually need the service and will call you with their issue. So my concern is, is if I read this, and I don't want to have to pay for it, I'm going to call and say, "I'm working part-time, you know, I can't afford it, even if I probably could afford it." Does that make sense? So I think that there's, there's going to be a challenge there, where we may need to set up some kind of guideline as to who meets that, and if we're getting involved on any level. Now, I know, I guess if we're just referencing them, then that's something we can suggest to the folks who will be helping. I read in the staff report that possibly the church community would be doing that, but I would hate to have, you know, get 50% of the people cite that sentence, and then we send them over, and then those folks get overwhelmed with folks who say that they're unable to do these things. The other thing I wanted to ask was, as I'm reading the summary, I think that the point one and two, I agree with wholeheartedly. I think that those are things that can be done, and I think that those are things that should be done. The one thing I'm having an issue with is item three. And I still want to hear public comment, if there is any, but my concern is item three, which is the administrative citation tools, because for me, I think that the, the community perception would be that this is a way for the city to make more money. I honestly think that, I really honestly truly think with the folk that I, folks that I've spoken to, that that will be the perception. I don't think that this is a necessary tool to implement at this juncture. The question that I had for staff, though, was, you just, the only attachment was the Curb program. The, the Respect program was not reattached to the staff report, unfortunately, but I do not believe that as part of the Respect program, there was not a citation tool included in that program, or was there?
No, no, there was not. At the December 20th council meeting, staff was directed, there was discussion in terms in terms of Buellton and their code enforcement program and what it was that made their program seem more successful, how they were getting results so quickly. Council expressed a concern over the backlog of cases, and so we were trying to address what tool they were utilizing to achieve results quickly.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, I'm still feeling the same way. Point one and two, I'm very in support of. Point three, I'm not convinced that that's something I'm interested in at this point. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As opposed to the issue of offering help to those that may have a problem, I don't believe the intent is to let them off the hook without any financial burden. I think it's maybe the issue of allowing them or giving them some direction that they can get it done less expensive. And a good example is possibly contacting CAC and using the Youth Corps for some of the work, where here again, the Youth Corps has a great program trying to employ some, well, youth, obviously in the area. Sometimes it's less than minimum wage labor and they can get it done a lot less, or much less expensive. So I'd encourage possibly using the Youth Corps for that. And I respectfully disagree with Councilmember Costa. I believe a citation program is probably a good point. I don't, there may be a few citizens that think it's going to be only a way of the city making money, but we know, and I think we should be able to convince the community that this is not a money-making step. It's actually, code enforcement costs us money, so, I mean, I agree with the citation process.
You know, two things. Number one, with regard to Councilmember Costa's comment, I've worked with a lot of people on a lot of things, and at least within this town, I haven't experienced being taken advantage of very much. On the contrary, I think people have been very judicious about asking for assistance, so I'm probably a lot less concerned about that. And I did think about it at the beginning, and actually Steve and I talked about it. With regard to the code enforcement citation process, when we started this conversation, I probably would have said right after you-know-what phrase is over, but after talking with Steve and looking at the results that Buellton has, I think we can accomplish both things. We can make people understand that no, this isn't a big fundraising effort on our part, and number two, we can get their attention with the first citation. So for instance, in the sample ordinance that is attached, the first citation is $100. And I wouldn't, frankly, wouldn't be in favor of that at all. And, you know, Steve and I vandered it back and forth, and I said, "You know, $25. It's a very small amount of money. It gets people's attention." And then the next one is $100 instead of 250, and the third one is $500 because by then we're tired of dealing with you and you obviously don't care. And then with, in terms of the response time, which is in paragraph B, and I think is now listed at five days, you know, 15 or 20 days to give somebody a chance. I think you can, sometimes people just have to get a little bump in their wallet before they pay attention, and I, and Steve and I have talked about this quite a bit because he's actually convinced me that this is the right way. And it's been successful in Buellton, and I think it's less about the amount of money and more about, in a public speech, it's called the attention step. You do that thing that causes the audience to pay attention to you, and I think in code enforcement, that's what we lack, is that attention step. And I think this is a good forward motion. I'm sorry, which one? Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be blunt. I have, I do have a couple of issues. We talk about an educational program. I mean, isn't it obvious that buildings that are abandoned, boarded up, partially destroyed? I mean, what is it that we have to educate people about that? I mean, it's obviously something that needs to be fixed. Broken windows? I mean, if we look at the nuisance, what's considered a nuisance is quite obvious. It's very obvious. So we're going to go and say, "We need to educate the public that we're not going to allow broken windows and doors, that we're not going to allow weeds that are going to harbor rats." You know, I think this is trash, garbage, you know, lumber, junk, stove, sinks, toilets, you know, in the front yard. I think our residents in Lompoc do know that that's kind of not very desirable. So what is the educational component? The second thing regarding the citation, that we're having issues with the citation tools, I do will support the citation tools, and I will do it for one very specific reason, which is that I think it's costing the city more money to not have the citation tools because the process by which we have to declare these nuisances and go through all of this noticing, it costs the city a lot of money. So in fact, I think it's going to save us money if we start citing people and we're going to really make them responsible to pay for their nuisance and not have the city be responsible to pay for their nuisance. So I will support the citation tools, and out of curiosity, tell me about the educational component that we need to do.
Yes. What we find many times in code enforcement cases is people are not aware of the code. They're not aware of the city ordinance.
So you're talking about basically informing the public what the code is, what a nuisance in this town is?
To a large extent, people are not aware.
Okay, so.
When you, to us, it may seem obvious that perhaps a broken window that's boarded is a violation. Some people are not aware of that. Also, where we run across instances of people parking their vehicles on their front lawns, that's a violation as well.
Right.
However, they're just not aware of that. And I think that the spirit of the council and what you've tried to do is work with the community. And so what we're trying to do is perhaps not just go in and write citations, however, have a component there that people can reference, and many times, people.
Totally agree. So maybe the educational component needs to be done first and say, okay, publish it in the Lompoc Record everywhere, send flyers out, put it in our utility bill, this is what is considered a nuisance, put it in the next month's bill, okay? And then after that, go in with the citations. So people have been informed, this is a nuisance. If you don't comply, you will be cited.
What you're describing is, it's almost like a notice of violation, and also I've seen administrative citations that it's the same form, but the first box that you mark is warning. And so coupled with that is you try to supply some educational materials. What I'm thinking would be quite cost-effective is our city website, where we already do have the city code there. Also, if we could have some examples of the provisions in seventeen point one four oh point oh one oh, some photo examples, that sort of thing, I think it would be helpful because we don't want to give the impression that we're simply going to go in and start writing citations. The citation is a tool to gain voluntary compliance with our codes and ordinances. And so if we can inform people, I think that that'll eliminate at least a portion of the violations that we are seeing.
Thank you.
And realize that, you know, my objective with this is the first contact they would receive is a nice friendly letter, and then if that doesn't seem to work out, then the next contact they receive is from Steve and it's less friendly and then the citation process is available to Steve. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Actually, you just answered what my, I have a statement, but you just answered what my question was going to be, is really, how would that work? So you're saying a letter first, then possibly a citation with just a warning, then are the other option we have after that to utilize if you feel that it's necessary would be? If, so, okay, let me restate this. If somebody is working with you, but maybe they're not getting the perfect compliance after that first letter, that first warning, are you still going to be working with them or would you immediately write them that administrative citation on that third visit?
What I would say is prior to initiating an administrative citation, we're going to have written policy, and that written policy will be how we proceed because that'll be the rule that we go by. Now, if I understand your question correctly, you're saying that if somebody is working with us, let's say we give them a warning, and then we come back after the designated time period, say 10 days later, and they've made some progress, but it isn't perfect? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Under those instances, I don't think it would be within policy that we will be establishing. I don't think that that's what we're going for here. This is more aimed for when we cannot get voluntary compliance, where we cannot get any effort towards abating the nuisance.
Okay, and then what I wanted to go back to was a statement made by Councilmember Lingle. It clearly states in our staff report that the fiscal impact would be some increases in revenue.
Sure, but that's not the purpose of it.
Of course, it's not the purpose, just like that's not the purpose you give out speeding tickets, but you still receive some revenue, right? So, and there's a huge perception problem with that. So I want to say that, as I truly believe that's a reality. And I want to keep going back to this example we keep stating of Buellton and how it's working in Buellton. As you stated, there's approximately 5,000 residents. So one person out of 5,000 residents is going to seem like a large impact. It's going to seem like it's happening fast because maybe for every one person, every one case that they have, maybe we have five, six, seven, or eight cases. So maybe we still get one person compliant or to bring them, their property into compliance, but it doesn't seem like as much because we have so many cases, but we have more residents. So for me, to say that it's working so well for them because of this administrative citation, I'm not sure I accept that as fact. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The education portion, I believe, is very important, and I'm glad Councilmember Martin brought it up. In the second paragraph of the letter that's going out, we're going, it is an education letter because we're going to insert, it says insert violation. So the letter will go out and it will be used to educate the citizen as to whether they're non-compliant. As a matter of fact, I'm sure that, I'm not aware of all the city codes. As a matter of fact, as the municipal pool, have we taken care of that broken window where we have a boarded up door on that?
I believe it's still boarded.
Okay, so there's a violation that we need to take care of, so. Yeah, yeah, well, I think we should, so. But the educational portion is very important, and I'm glad that's the first friendly step that we would take. If they're making progress towards it, we would not immediately give them a citation. We'd continue to work with them. And I agree, it's, we're a city of 42,000 people as opposed to 5,000 people. We're not going to see immediate big impact, but we have to start someplace. If we start, if we don't start anyplace, we're not going to get to where we want to go. And I think taking baby steps at this point is better than taking no steps at all. So it sounds like a good program, and I think we're heading in the right direction.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I was just getting ready to say, you know, we're taking a corner right here. We're finally going proactive instead of so reactive, and I really do think that the letter that you would issue, signed by the mayor, would be the ideal training for that person. We don't need to train the whole town because I think probably 90% of the town is in compliance with things. The citation, I will support. I think it's a way for you to leverage, and it's a good deal. I'm glad that we've not got into the motorhome trailer dumping type thing here yet, but just the basic appearance of the city. So I think that we're ready to just go ahead and start with this. I think it's a good idea, and I'd like to incorporate the recommendations of the mayor's letter in with recommendation number two as a training.
And just parenthetically, when I surveyed this once before, there was approximately one property per city block, two sides of the street. So it's not like we're talking about 1,000 properties. It's really a much smaller number, and the ones that are not so good are way not so good. You know, they're not, it's not a real big judgment call when you look at the ones that are really, really bad. Yeah. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I didn't know if you saw it.
I saw it.
Right, I keep forgetting that. Councilmember Starbuck, I would agree that as code enforcement stands now, you may be looking at 10%, but once you step into the proactive realm, you're looking at much more. If you consider the folks who simply park their cars on the grass, if all else considered is perfectly in compliance, that's going to add a considerable percentage. I mean, all of these different things, when we're looking proactive, I think that there's going to be a considerable, considerably larger percentage of the community that's not in compliance. So I would actually argue that the education needs to go beyond just this letter. I think that there needs to be door hangers. I think that there needs to be whatever other components that staff comes up with as ways to inform the public that this is, not only this is the law and this is our ordinance and this is what a nuisance is, but also what the new policy is. I think that the entire community needs to be well aware of the policy that we're implementing, and I think that all needs to go in a very aggressive education component. I agree with Councilmember Lingle that the education component is important. However, the letter alone, for me, is nowhere near sufficient. Thank you.
I'm thinking we could probably get another cartoon in the Lompoc Record that would help. Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're kind of getting unfocused here. We're strictly talking about this seventeen point one four zero point zero one zero. Well, nowhere in there is talking about cars being parked in the front lawn, okay? It's talking about dismantled, inoperative automobiles, trailers, campers, camper shells, boats, and other motor vehicles, unless I'm not reading it, but it's not talking about that you would park, that that's a nuisance. An operating, you know, to park your truck in your front lawn and the truck is working. Is that considered a nuisance in this?
You raised a good point. That is a common thing that we see, however, it isn't listed in the seventeen.
It's not a nuisance, so it's not part of the sin. What is here, to me, is quite obvious. We're talking about abandoned, wrecked, dismantled, inoperative automobiles, trailers, campers, camper shells. Okay, so it's a much more confined then, and this is probably the most blatant blight that we can possibly see in private property and perhaps in some situations, city property, like the municipal pool out there, okay? So let's focus on that. I mean, that's kind of, and given that, I think we do need to send a letter, and I would really, and I will go back to the original problem, which I voted against at the beginning. I would like to get not just the mayor to have gone and surveyed the city and have X number of houses. I would like independent confirmation from the staff. I also would like a letter that does talk, and I already talked, the change that I would like in that letter. Now, to satisfy Councilmember Costa that we need to do more of an education, perhaps we could do a notice in the utility bill to just, you know, CEROCs this thing and put it out there and add it on to the utility bill. This is what is considered a nuisance, you know? And all residents would get it, not only the ones that are violating now, but perhaps future violators that don't know. So we do need to send it out to the whole population at large, and the best way that I can see to do that is to go through the utility bills and put exactly this in the utility bill.
Okay, we're going to go to Councilmember Lingle. I agree, utility bill is good, and then we're going to go to public testimony, and then we'll come back to you, Councilmember Costa.
Actually, the thousands of people that are watching tonight already realize what the policy is going to be, so. You know, there's, I don't know how difficult it would be to change this nuisance policy, but all we have to do is change one little word and it'll incorporate the vehicles parked on lawns. J1, it talks about trailers, campers, boats, and other motor vehicles. It says other than automobiles and motorcycles. If we just take out the other than automobiles or parts thereof, which are not parked entirely on a paved surface, that would take care of the cars parked on the front lawns. We, if we could change this, just strike that one little word saying automobiles, that would take care of motor vehicles parked on the front lawn, I believe. So we may want to consider doing that. And the other thing I want to do before we go to public comment, if we, as a council, decide to recommend number two, I'd like to see the last word in the second sentence stricken, where it, if we choose number, recommendation number two with the mayor's letter, where it says violation, where the violation is very obvious, I think it'd just be where the violation is obvious instead of being. I think it'd just be where the violation is obvious instead of being very obvious. I'd just like to see that word stricken if we choose recommendation number two. It's the last word in the second sentence of that recommendation. Oh, front page, front page on the recommendations. Just, I'd just like to see the word "very" stricken from that. Just say where the violation is obvious.
Okay. Let's take just a second, Steve, and see if there's anyone out there that would like to come forward in public comment.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I concur with Councilman Lingle. I was thinking whether I really concur with you or not. But before you send out any letters, I'd encourage you to take a trip and look at the city properties. I mean, if you're wanting to set the example, then set the example. I'm looking at this ordinance, 17140, and, you know, the area that's supposed to be paved for a parking lot across from the fireplace is a perfect example of this. You mentioned the window. Secondly, is, last week, I handed you out some census information. The census information show that probably close to 50% of all residential dwellings within the city are nonowner occupied. If you focus strictly on the property owners, you are going to create a significant shirker problem. Because if the property owner is the only one that he's penalized, nobody's going to do anything. And I have a case in point. I received a notice, four mattresses abandoned behind one of my properties. So unless there was a big sale somewhere and all my tenants ran out at the same time and bought four, you know, mattresses and then threw those four out, it probably wasn't from them. Well, I had readily taken some proactive measures and indicated in, and sent tenants notice that I would be incorporating these violations into the contract. So when I received that notice, I immediately called up four tenants and said, hey, you know, if it's determined that these are yours, you're going to be assessed a fee to have to remove these. Oh, no, no, no. They, receiving my notice, had taken the time and one of them had took in a picture and another one had written down a license plate number of a person who had dumped not only at my property, but at three other properties. Not once, not twice, but three times. I called into the appropriate channel within the city. I sent an email and I said, this is a license number of someone who has dumped. Is there any possible way to at least call the person and say, hey, you were witness dumping? Because, you know, there's the hearsay factor and such. But you're dumping, you know? If we catch you doing this, there's a fine or some type of consequence. To this day, it hasn't been resolved. So, you know, again, if you're going to, if you're going to just pinpoint the big bad property owner, you're going to still have a big problem because you're going to have the shirkers from a lot of the others. The ordinance states, I mean, it clearly states, and let me pull this out. It says, "A person owning, leasing, occupying, managing, or having the charge of any premise in the city." So make sure you get everybody if you want to solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Back to council. Councilmember Costa. Come on down, Steve.
Thank you, Marilyn. I think that that's a good point. Again, going back to the example of Lompoc versus Buellton, where you're looking at homeownership in Buellton, it's going to be much higher than 50%. You're going to see that the property owner is in that home much more than you would in Lompoc. So again, we're saying that this recourse of this administrative citation tool worked so well there, so it may work well here. And I'm not sure I'm really buying that comparison still. The other thing I wanted to bring up is I would like to allow staff to decide how to disseminate the information. To be completely honest, I believe door hangers is actually a better idea than utility bills. I'm much more inclined to read something that's hanging on my door than something that comes in my utility bill because a lot of things come in my utility bill and go into the recycling bin. And I know that that happens often. So be creative. I think that that's great. Not only do we need, do I believe that we would need to Xerox 17.140, but we would need to include that new policy. Because as it stands right now, people may know this, but they may not know that the recourse of action has changed. So for me, that component's even more important than communicating what the ordinance itself is. So I just wanted to state that. But again, I think Nick brought up a really, excuse me, Mr. Gonzalez brought up a really good point that we need to consider and how effective really the citation tool is going to be and if it's only going to create perception problems for us. Thank you.
Steve, my recollection is that we cite the resident on nuisances, don't we?
That's correct. Well, we don't cite it all right now.
Well, I'm sorry. That the effort that we begin is with the resident unless the property is vacant, and then we begin the effort with the property owner.
We do. We begin that with the property owner. However, I think if we have a situation where it's a rental property and we have the door hanger like you're describing, that's going to address the problem. That may eliminate the problem right there. That's going to communicate to them that they have a violation.
We do it when it's complaint based.
Yeah. Point of clarification.
I'm referring to complaint based. Go ahead.
That it is sent to the resident. Because in the case that I've experienced, it was sent to the property owner and not to the person who was renting at that time. It was a letter to the residents, but it was addressed to the property owner. So the resident living there didn't open it. They gave it to the property owner.
Right. Currently, communication goes to the property owner.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. You know, regarding the doorknobs, let's just make sure that we don't do it before that month because there's going to be a lot of doorknobs during that month. It's a joke if you were here in the last council meeting. Door hangers. The door hangers that you would like to educate the public with, right? It's election year. There's going to be lots of door hangers. Anyway, so, okay. So we can't hold the property owner responsible. So who do we hold responsible then? You know, property owners are responsible for maintaining their properties. As far as I'm concerned, I live in a property, I rent a property. I am responsible for the maintenance. I have a contract and a lease with a renter. And there is a certain maintenance that is associated with a business transaction. And whether the property owner decides to exercise that business transaction or exercise that, whatever it is that they have in place, that's their business. But why should the city go and start, well, we're going to deal with the property owner or no, we're going to deal with the resident, the renter that might be there or not be there? I think our only recourse is the property owner. Because they're responsible for their property, as far as the last time I heard.
Perhaps that's something that the staff could craft in the policy that comes back to us, since that seems to be a question, Joe? It is who we would, who we would seek out with regard to these efforts. I'm not asking for a response. I'm just saying that's something the staff could determine.
The code says everyone's responsible. So I'm not sure what you're asking, whether you want the code to be changed or whether you want staff to suggest.
No, actually, you answered the question. So life is good. We can go after everybody. Okay. Councilmember Lingle.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if you're ready. I'd like to move that we accept number two, reading this way. Direct staff to continue the current complaint-based code enforcement program, here inserting with education, and the addition of proactive code enforcement by staff in instances where the violation is striking very, where the violation is obvious, and the addition of administrative citation tools when attempts to gain voluntary compliance have not been successful.
And I would second that with the understanding that within the sample ordinance, the first fine would be reduced to $25, the second one to 100, and the third to 500. And the number of days for compliance would be changed from five to 15.
I'll agree to that.
Okay. And I think we're all on board with the letter as the first step in this, correct?
Okay.
I still like to make a request on the letter that the sentence, if you're unable to correct the nuisance because of financial or health issues, please contact the city for assistance.
Okay. If that makes us all happy, I'm all good with it. But you wouldn't have any difficulty with me recruiting the people that are going to do this on behalf of the city, would you?
You know, I think that's something that needs to be discussed with the code enforcement staff as to who will be the most qualified people to go and do the cleanup and so forth. I don't know if there is any liabilities, issues for a volunteer organization to go into a private property under the management of the city. That's, I think, a little, I'm not certain. But I don't want to get into those legalities of that. And I don't want to kill this motion because of those legalities. But I think it's something that we're going to have to look at very carefully to send, you know, some high school youth corps group to some private property and have them clean it up with the city's management or city's, you know?
Now, the whole goal here is just put people together.
Whatever. But let's, you know, that's something down the road that I think it would need to be looked up carefully between the staff.
Ms. Martin, I agree with you. And we could leave that up to the code enforcement team. The only reason I mention the youth corps is it's a great program, putting sometimes at-risk youth to work. So if, and give that as an option to the property owner. That's the only way, reason I recommended that.
Okay. Are there any other changes anyone would like made? I'm sorry, Councilmember Martin, is your light still on?
Oh, sorry.
No problem. Yes? No? I seconded. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. I'd just like to make a statement. The current city policy does not include the administrative citation tool, nor did the respect program, which wasn't implemented but was a great idea, nor did the cur program as presented by the mayor. It's very unfortunate for me because I do think that there are some components to this that are going to be very helpful. But for the record, I do not support directing staff to return to council with administrative citation tools by any means. I don't think that we're looking at it in an effective way. And I don't think it's going to assist in the perception of the city whatsoever. I think that there's other tools that can be utilized. So for that reason, unfortunately, I'll be voting against the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes four in favor and one opposed. Okay. Moving on to new business. Item number nine. Consideration of Resolution Number 5764/12, directing SCI Consulting Group, SCI, to prepare an engineer's report for fiscal year 2011-2012 for the continuing of levying of the annual assessments of the Park Maintenance and City Pool Assessment District. Brad Wookiee.
Mayor, councilmembers, that's a good introduction to this item. This is the first step of a three-step process to get to the point of having a public hearing to either implement or not implement the assessment for the 2012-2013 year. The, we do this every year. The assessment that was put in place in 2002 through a vote of the people requires that this is done every single year through this process. And this is a first step, which is basically giving authority to the contractor to prepare the engineer's report, which is one of the things that has to be done in order to be able to have an assessment done for the next year. This is just simply requesting that that process get started. We will come back two other times. Once to bring the proposed engineer's report for comments and suggestions. And then a third time for the actual public hearing of the lean process for the assessment itself. There were several things that I did to change. This is probably the eighth or ninth report we've done this way. Has, had been done previously by the Parks Recreation Director, and now I've taken it over. The main thing I noticed this year was the addition of, you had mentioned continuation. There was one case that was brought where the continuation of the assessment is fairly critical to continue doing it in the future years. And that will be brought up as part of the staff, part of the engineer's report that's presented in April. I believe it's in April. The proposed timeline gives quite a bit of information about what goes on between the steps that you guys will see. The contractor will work with staff to determine the items that are part of the budget, the projects that are there. Some of those projects are already in the 2011-2013 budget, and we will just identify those as being part of this. So to sum it all up, we're just starting the process, and this is a request to get authorization to start that process. And without going into too much more detail, I'll provide you information on a question basis.
Are there any questions at this time? Is there any public comment on this item?
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I just, in reading the report, the three-page report, there was a paragraph that says, "Nothing in AB 26 provides for the assumption of the agency's obligation by the city. AB 26 limits the liability of the successor agency for the agency's obligations to assets transferred to the city as a successor agency from the agency by operation of law. However, as to liability arising under federal law, this state statutory limitation on liability may prove to be ineffective." Can somebody please explain that?
You're one off.
I'll be working.
Yeah, we're on, we're on nine. But we'll keep that, and we'll come back to it.
I think I answer that when I get to that item, two items down the road.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we can come back to the council. Is there any other question? I entertain a motion. Member Lingle.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept staff recommendations.
And a second.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to accept staff recommendations. No other lights? Could we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Okay. Moving on to 10. The award of professional service contract for water, wastewater utility rate study. It's a good thing you didn't move.
Yeah. Three in a row, actually. So the, during the 9-11 budget process, when I came aboard, there were three things where I was asked to evaluate. And the first was the electric rates. The second was water and wastewater. And the third was solid waste rates. In the 11-13 budget and the 9-11 budget, we stipulated in each one of those budgets that water and wastewater rates would probably have to be addressed due to the financial status of the entities. But also, more primarily, because the last time that they have had their rates reviewed was prior to 2006. So it's been eight, maybe 10 years since we've had a outside evaluation of these rates to make sure that they're consistent with our cost structure. Because they were mentioned in the budget, this is something that has been somewhat planned. And at the, I believe it was in November, we had a workshop where I was given some direction to come back to council with proposals. These proposals were solicited in December with an evaluation process in January after the bids finished. One thing that's not in the staff report is that we did take this to the utility commission for their review at their February 13 meeting, which was after the staff report was prepared. But they did get a chance to see the staff report. They agreed with the staff report and recommended that it come forward to you with the recommendations that are in the staff report. that are in the staff report. For a couple of reasons, I did not include in the budget any kind of line item for the process of doing the study. One of those was to not give any of the bidders, any of the potential bidders, an idea of what we thought it would cost for them to do the work. So that was a little bit on purpose. The other item that was on purpose was that the two budgets had to take money out of reserves to do the operations, so this would just create another use of reserves to do this work. It will do that. We're requesting an appropriation out of both water and wastewater to do the study, but the ultimate result would be to get to a point where we have adequate reserves and to be able to pay for the ongoing operations of both utilities, including debt service. Debt service was a significant component that has come about because of primarily a wastewater treatment plant, but also significant projects that were done in the Water Department. And those were all planned through the 2006 rate study that was done. But now we're looking to see, were we on target with those rates? Do they need to be adjusted? And if they do need to be adjusted, how much? One significant thing that changed in the landscape of rate studies for water and wastewater is they are now covered by legal reasons by Prop 218. Prop 218 became effective in 1996, but it didn't really address water and wastewater. So through a series of lawsuits throughout the state, they have now become part of the process. So in 2006, when we last raised rates for water and wastewater, it didn't have to go through that process as significantly as it does now. So that was a primary aspect of what we looked at for the vendors who bid on this, is their expertise in compliance with Prop 218. One thing I'd like to say is we had a significant amount of vendors who proposed on this. They all do this as a living. They're all very good at it. So the differentiation between number one and number 11 was fairly small, so we were able to utilize the cost component to quite, quite an extent. And, but the differentiation between them and the points we put towards them was very, very close. The top four are within about $2,000 in their bid, and they were all very highly rated. And in fact, the bottom seven were, I, if we flipped a coin and picked any one of the 11, I think we would get a quality product. So we were just looking at the incremental differences between the vendors to see if we could get the best product. So with that, I would recommend that we would award to Willdown. They were the highest-rated vendor within a few, I think, less than $1,000 at the lowest bidder. And I would also recommend that we do a supplemental preparation, as mentioned, the recommendation from both utilities to pay for the city split 50-50. With that, I conclude my, my staff report. I put a significant amount of additional information in here because I think that's something that's going to be a good basis for the vendor, once they get started, to see kind of where we came from and where we're, where we're going, so.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wilkie, I had a question, but the answer is in the report, and I just wanted to clarify it publicly. The citizens of Lompoc are the ones that pay for the bond for the wastewater treatment plant, and is that correct?
Yes, but the citizens that are our ratepayers, yes. The ratepayers are the ones that pay for the bonds, yes.
But we do charge a bonus, I guess, or an additional amount to people outside of the city limits that use their water.
We have a small system outside of the city limits, and they are charged an amount in excess of what our in-town residents are charged because of that precise reason, because they're outside of city limits.
Okay. And then the other thing, I don't know, you know, several years ago, we chose, the city of Lompoc chose not to use state water, which was a good decision. I think we probably have a better quality water, and we've always been able to keep our rates lower than surrounding communities. I'm assuming that this study that we're going to do will do a comparison with other cities as well, what they're paying, the cities that use state water as opposed to us.
That was one of the criteria, was to find out how extensive they would give us a proposal of comparisons. And we actually do in-house some comparisons of most of the local agencies in Santa Barbara County, so I'm sure they will build on that. But we did ask them to provide comparisons with similar communities, not just local communities, but also similar, similar-sized communities, so we get a good cross-section.
I think that's important, that we can show comparison. The other thing is, what, what causes, the reason we have a rate increase is our expenses are higher. Okay, we're, we're still selling, well, the, one of the things that would possibly cause it to go up is if we, when we'll all the irrigation wells, we, our revenue would go down, we'd have, you know, we'd have to make up for that. What causes our expenses to rise? We own the plant. We, our labor has been relatively consistent. We haven't, you know, had big raises or anything for staff.
Well, it's, it's two sides. It's the expense side, the cost, and there's also the revenue side. The revenue for wastewater and water are primarily derived from volume of sales. So if we took a look at the study that was done in 2004, there is an assumption that we would actually increase the volume of sales. As you know, we had a recent water management review that showed we're actually reducing the amount of per capita consumption. So part of the reason is that we expected to have growth in sales. That may not have occurred. We also had an assumption of the number of residential units that would be utilized in the system. And there was a fairly significant amount of new homes that they expected to be online that would be utilized in the services, that would spread the fixed cost over more properties. And that, I don't believe that that came to fruition. We have had new properties. We just didn't have as many new properties as was anticipated in 2004. So there's a significant amount of growth that we didn't get that would have given us more revenue, just from the fact of more, more homes.
And the, the rate increase, the rate study will do, that bases our expenses on both the wastewater treatment plan and the water treatment plan, is that correct?
We'll be doing them separately because each one of the utilities has to stand alone. But because we have so much bonded indebtedness that is, crosses over the two utilities, that it just made sense to do the study, two different studies basically, on the utilities at the same time because of that significant cross. The debt is in water and wastewater separately, but we got, but the debt obligations, the covenants that look at them, don't look at those two utilities separately. But we have to do it separately, so it makes sense to do them, do them together.
Okay. And then I just want to make sure that we let the, if we award this contract to this company that they're aware, or maybe they're aware, let them know that our new wastewater treatment plant supposedly is going to be more efficient, or it is more efficient, so hopefully our expenses will go down from there. They should incorporate that into their study.
Yeah, and we've had about a year's worth of operational history on there. The, that's a good thing because we did not get any kind of proposed plan of what the O&M cost would be when we built it. That was not something that was requested of the designers. So we were, we built it with some assumptions of what the cost would be, but those would only really be borne out by actual operations to see how it was going. So there are several areas where we're saving money. We no longer have to buy chemicals to run the plant, but, and we don't, no longer have to buy gas to do some of the activities there. But we also traded that for a significant amount more of electrical use to run the blowers and that kind of stuff. So we traded one type of energy for another, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. Mr. Wilkie, on page six of seven, in the third paragraph, right in the middle of that paragraph, it says, "A portion of the rate study will evaluate the advantages and disadvantages of issuing new debt that could smooth any potential rate increases over time by extending the repayment obligation of possible capital improvement needs." What, what does it mean to smooth any potential rate increases?
Well, one of the things that we would look at is the capital needs of the two utilities. So we will be working with the two utility managers and their departments to find out what their future needs are to maintain the integrity of the utilities. If we were to do that on a cash basis, we would have to collect enough money to pay for that within the timeframe of improving those, making those improvements. If it becomes more economical to do the improvements but pay for it over a 30-year life of a bond, it might be more economical for the ratepayers to do it that way rather than do it with pay-as-you-go type funding.
And I was really glad to see that, so I look forward to seeing that in the report. Thank you.
Let's take a quick sec here and see if we have anyone for public comment on this one. Anyone for public comment? Seeing no one rise, we'll close it and come back. Are there any other questions for Mr. Wilkie? And if not, I'll accept a motion. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. I move that we direct staff to enter into a contract with the highest-ranked proposer, Weldon Financial Services, for a total contract amount not to exceed $43,780. Authorize the management services director to execute the contract and to execute other such documents necessary to complete the rate study, and authorize the supplemental appropriation of funds for the study as follows. And these are the account numbers, correct?
Yeah.
51500-53329 for $21,890. 53500-53329 for $21,890.
And a second, please.
One second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? And that passes five zero. Thank you. Okay. And now new business. We have the approval of recognizing the Obligation Payment Schedule, ROPS, for the period from January through June 2012 by the City Council as governing body of the successor agency of the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency. Brad? Three's the winner.
If I can't do it all, I will rely a little bit on our city attorney to help out. But this is a step in several steps that we've taken over the last several months. Back in January, we actually did a request to do an enforceable obligation payment schedule, the EOPS, and this is the next item that was required by ABX 126 to provide a groundwork, I guess, of the payments that we will be making as the successor agency. It's effectively, the schedule that's being proposed, that's being requested for approval, i- is just built on the EOPS, and it's given us some information that will be provided for the first six months of the successor agency. We will have to do this, one of these, every six months until the bond debt is extinguished in 2034, unless the, the state government decides to change their mind and do something different. So this is the first one of substance that we'll be relying on to make our payments. And the payments are either all of our enforceable obligations, either through debt obligations, contractual obligations, MOUs, things like that, that are, that had been enforced, put in place by the RDA.
Councilmember Starbuck.
This is the same report we did approve last month with a different name, then.
It's slightly different. It's got a little bit different time period, and it's also, because the EOPS was effectively delayed by the lawsuit by a few months, so it would have been applicable from some period until December. So it has a little bit of overlap, but we also were able to refine it somewhat based on a better understanding of some of the items. So there's a few small differences between the two, but the main difference is the time, the timeframe.
If you remember Nick's question, do you want to go ahead and answer it? Or we can, remember the question?
I don't remember the question, actually.
Okay, let's open oral communication. Nick, come and ask the question again. And if anyone else is interested in oral communication, get in line.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc, Honorable Mayor, councilpeople, sorry for jumping up. I was looking at it, and I thought I was at that, at last time. I basically had a question. It, where it outlines under fiscal impact, it states that nothing in AB 26 provides for the assumption of the agency's obligation by the city. It discusses the limitation of the liability by the successor agency, which is the city. But then it says, however, as to liability arising under federal law, the state statutory limitation on liability may prove to be ineffective. And I was just looking for clarification on that.
That would be the last paragraph, right above the word conclusion, on the third page of the report. So the attorney, would you like to wade into that?
He said he wasn't going to answer it when he first.
No, no, I, I see, I see federal law and state statutory. I'm just sure that's yours.
Basically, it was a, a legalistic disclaimer, so that we, we were sure that we communicated with you that the state law establishes a limitation, absolute limitation on the successor agency, but a state law can't do anything to a federal law. And so if there's some federal law out there that somehow is going to create some liability on the agency, which I really can't think of one, but if there is one, that state law doesn't obviate that federal liability.
So could you stay up really late tonight and read all the federal laws and make sure we're safe, please? Okay. Any other questions for Brad? Okay. Seeing no lights, I would accept a motion. Councilmember Martner.
I move that we take a staff recommendation, and I won't read the four points.
And a second, okay. And is there any other discussion? No lights, let's vote. And that passes five zero. Thank you, Brad. Written communications. Do we have any written communications down there at the city clerk-in? None? Okay. Oral communications, last shot. Come on down.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Not to beat a dead horse, but I, in hearing a councilwoman, Martner, it's not that I don't believe that property owners should be accountable. I indicated that I had put in motion the process. My concern wasn't, it still wasn't addressed after coming up here, was that I went through the formal complaint process, I provided a license plate number, and there's no consequence to the people that were violating the law. So you have to work something in there so it captures those people, everybody, not, not just the property owner. I mean, aside, if there's going to be no violation, then I'll just collect this stuff and then bring it here and put it here.
You know, someone did that in the city hall parking lot the other day. City administrator, could you perhaps kind of look into what the options might be with regard? And, and, you know, Nick is not the first one that's talked about it, other property owners have too. And I was kind of enthusiastic about solving, solving the dumping problem around until I realized that anyone I talked to the city about got a letter from the city and had to go take care of it, even though it was dumped illegally on their property. And so I was a lot less enthusiastic about it, and it seemed like maybe we should look at how we might attack that. Littering is a $1,000 fine, but I, I don't know if it has to be witnessed by a police officer, I'm just, I'm not familiar with that. Maybe you could just have a few words with us next meeting? Amnesty Dump Day, yeah, I think that's a good, good thought.
You get one free pickup a year from Solid Waste Department, but I thought that it was a city law that it is illegal to dump.
It's actually a state law. It's actually a state law.
Right, so the recourse should then be with the police department, not with code enforcement.
Let's let the city administrator come back with some information, because I'm just, rather than working on this at five after 11. Council requests comments and meeting reports from the left. Councilmember Martner.
I don't have anything to report.
I would report that I had 35 meetings over the last two weeks. The most fun one was with the Girl Scouts. I learned from them that their 100th anniversary is coming up, and we'll get to present them with a proclamation at the next council meeting. And I did not have any activities where I traveled or participated at city expense. It was at my own cost. Councilmember Starbuck?
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Lingel.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. The one thing I needed to report is that the city did pay, I believe it's $25, for myself and Teresa Galavan, although she was only able to be there for a very short period of time, and actually missed the entire event, unfortunately. We went to the Green Business Program luncheon that was in the city of Buellton. This is the second consecutive year that I've gone. It's the second year that I was essentially the only representative from Lompoc or the Lompoc Valley. That's because we're the only outstanding city that doesn't, that is not a member of the Green Business Program. So I just want to give council a heads-up that I will be working with staff in the near future in trying to get the Green Business Program into the city of Lompoc. Thank you.
Thank you. And now adjournment. We'll be adjourned to the Lompoc City Council. We'll adjourn to a joint meeting with the Human Services Commission at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, March 6th, unless we have a closed session, in which case we'll be here sooner. And since we didn't get to the city attorney, I guarantee you there'll be a closed session.